Oh, surprise. Here I am. Here I am. Hello, Councilor Pinnell.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Everybody.
Eh?
Doing everybody.
Nice. Nice. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm Councilor Corey Inglesorff, and I'd like to welcome the public, my fellow council members, the media, and anyone who's joining us in person and electronically for this committee of the whole meeting. Today's agenda lists all the items before committee for consideration. The recommended motions on today's agenda are shown in boldface. It's important to note that any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of December 9th, 2025, at which time council may approve, amend, defer, or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. This meeting is being livestreamed, and any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording from the meeting will be livestreamed on the county's website and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the bottom right of the county's homepage at thecounty.ca. Under Agenda Item 6, I will be asking for comments from the audience on any item listed on the agenda. Today, we have no registered comment from the audience, but if anyone present would like to speak at this section of the agenda, you're welcome to do so. You will have three minutes. A reminder that if you participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes for informed part of the public record and be posted to the county's website. In the event of a fire, please use the applicable two fire exits in Shire Hall or wherever you're tuning in from. For those in Shire Hall council chambers, please mute and limit the use of cell phones. Can I please get a motion to confirm today's agenda? Uh, Council Prinsen and Council Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a Prinsen-Harrison motion that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of November 27th, 2025 be confirmed.
Thank you, all those in favor. And that carries. Um, Section 3 Disclosure of Acute and Near Interests in the General Nature thereof. Does anybody have anything to disclose today? No, seeing none. Um, I'm going to deviate just a bit from the agenda to allow Mayor Ferguson to make an announcement.
Yeah, thanks very much, um, Mr. Chair. This is, um, for the benefit of, uh, council members. Parade season is upon us, beginning tomorrow night, and for, um, I think it's fair that everybody pitch in, uh, to reimburse Council Nyman for the, uh, what we'll be handing out during the parades tomorrow, Sunday, and, uh, week Sunday. So for those members of council, including myself, who've not made a donation of $20, please do so to Council Nyman. He does not accept e-transfers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Ferguson. Um, so that will bring us to, uh, Section 4, and today we have, uh, Carl Baucher, Hastings' Quinney Paramedic Service, and Connor Dory, CAO Hastings County, to present to the committee regarding the new EMS service level agreement and the EMS master plan. Um, welcome. And just a reminder, you have 20 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you to the members of the committee. It's our pleasure to be here, speaking on behalf of Hastings' Quinney Paramedic Services, joined by Chief Baucher, our paramedic chief. My name's Connor Dory. Uh, I'm the chief administrative officer with Hastings County. Just really want to start off by, uh, recognizing the partnership that exists with, between Hastings County and Prince Edward County. We have a lot of formal and informal partnerships, and we, uh, see the, the benefit of working together amongst our municipalities to further better the region. Paramedic Services is one of those formal partnerships that has been successful. Uh, as we look to the long-term planning of Paramedic Services, it is in best interest and in our, uh, in our view to, to continue that partnership with Prince Edward County to make sure that this critical services of emergency services and paramedic services continues to be provided. We, when we look at how Paramedic Services has evolved in the way that it is and the critical role that it plays for the overall health and well-being of our residents of both Hastings County and Prince Edward County, uh, Paramedic Services is a fundamental service that exists. We look forward to, to discussing our long-term service plan, uh, the current contract and our services with Prince Edward County, as well as further details as it relates to paramedic services. So I'll pass it over to our paramedic chief. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, your worship and members of committee. Uh, thanks for the opportunity, uh, to speak with you today. And our presentation will touch on three key areas. Uh, one is just providing a general update and some, uh, some performance, uh, reviews. Uh, I'd like to talk briefly about the expiring land ambulance service contract, uh, and then we have a request for proposals that's currently launched for a 10-year master plan for our service. So, next slide, please. So just for a bit of a recap, currently, we respond to approximately 3,500 calls in Prince Edward County, uh, annually. Uh, these are responded to primarily by two ambulances, ambulances operating 24/7 at a Pickton base. And 20% of all the calls in this region fall into the catchment area of Hastings County. So you're further supported by ambulances responding from Belleville and, uh, Quinty West. And, uh, in the last couple of years, we've actually opened a base on behalf of the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinty, so there's another northern portion of Prince Edward County that, uh, that we address. Uh, our overall operating budget is about $34 million. Uh, Prince Edward County's share of that is about 2.1 million after the land ambulance service grant, and I've put, uh, some municipal comparisons in, in the slide deck for you to review. Next slide, please. About 2025, just to recap some of the major accomplishments, this is service-wide. Uh, it was really highlighted this year by an enhancement in Belleville. Uh, it started mid-year, 12 hours a day, seven days a week, and we increased that to 24/7 in October. Uh, we also hired another 27 full and part-time staff throughout the course of this year. Uh, there were some groundbreaking changes, uh, with the provincial dispatch system was, was upgraded, and I'll get into that conversation a, a little bit later. Uh, there was a new collective agreement award. We'd, we'd had an expired contract for about a, a year and a half, and we need a little help through interest arbitration, uh, but finally that's been. Next slide, please. So, current challenges, uh, certainly lots of growth. If you just look at the size of our service, we had 84 full-time paramedics, uh, prior to COVID. We have 140 full-time medics a, as of today. So we're looking a lot younger, about 40% of our frontline staff, uh, have been here for less than three years. Uh, so supply hasn't quite caught up to demand, but I'm optimistic. Uh, we've still got some open full-time spots and some declining interest in, in full-time as, as people favor a, a different work-life balance. Uh, with all this growth, it's, it's actually outpacing our infrastructure. We built a brand-new base in Sterling a few years back, and already we're at capacity. Uh, so these are some of the challenges that we need to plan for. And then on the horizon, there's consideration for the paramedic program to go from two years to three years. Uh, so if that application is successful, there's a potential for a bit of a staffing deficit there as well, even though I know colleges are working hard, uh, to see if they can mitigate that the best as possible. Next slide, please. So just looking at the call volumes over the last three years, uh, this is a bit of good news. We've had some welcome relief. We were seeing 7%, 8%, 9% increases, uh, coming out of COVID, and this has stabilized to a certain extent. Uh, we're also seeing this really across eastern Ontario, so it's given us a chance to kind of catch up. Next slide, please. So the medical priority dispatch system, uh, just came into effect in February of 2025, uh, and this is part of a provincial rollout, so there's still some dispatch centers across the province who have yet to implement this, but the intent is to roll it out provincially. Uh, it's often considered a more accurate triage system, and as you can see, it's already resulted in a 30% reduction in the number of lights and sirens calls that we're responding to. Next slide. So given there's a significant decrease in the number of lights and sirens calls, it can make its statistical analysis a, a little bit difficult. So, you know, we're looking at the last, uh, three years, and, and really what we can surmise is that lights and sirens have been, lights and siren responses in terms of our, our response time have been relatively consistent, uh, over the last three years. And then just of, of note, Hastings County ambulances, uh, traditionally take longer to respond, uh, to calls into Prince Edward County. So, uh, if we look at our response times in Pickton, uh, they're comparatively good. That would be comparative to what response times in Belleville or Bancroft, uh, would look like. Uh, next slide, please. So, looking at the kind of cross-border here, I think there was concerns when we first came in with the enhancement back in 2023, uh, that you would see, uh, the Pickton ambulance ending up in Belleville all the time. And what this graph shows is, is, is that, that trend is actually the opposite. Uh, you're seeing, uh, the need, uh, for ambulances from Prince Edward County to go into Belleville, uh, less and less and less, and as Belleville builds more capacity, uh, the same is true. Uh, next slide. So, uh, so based on the response time map, oh, sorry, I've lost my slides here. So, response in Prince Edward County is important. So when we look at these graphs, you'll see the percentage of calls that Hastings County is doing, uh, in Prince Edward County. So in 2023, we did about 28%. That dropped a bit in 2024, uh, bounced back up a little bit in 2025. And, and that's important to note, because as I said earlier, Prince Edward County ambulances, when they're responding, they get there in about 11 minutes. When Hastings County ambulances are coming into the region, it's about 15 minutes in terms of the overall response times. So the more calls that fall in Hastings County catchment area has a negative effect on the response time for Prince Edward County. The more, conversely, the more calls we do in Pickton has a positive effect on the overall response time in Prince Edward, in Prince Edward County. Next slide, please. So we did a little, a lot of work on this with our GIS department, uh, and then we actually looked at the real call data to confirm the accuracy of it. Uh, so really the takeaway on this is, you know, we have a, a large geographic area. Uh, there's some areas where response times, just based on the location of the bases, uh, is going to trigger a, a longer response. Uh, and as we see trends starting to shift and more calls coming into those areas, it's going to push, uh, response time up with time. Next slide, please. But based on that response time map that I just previously showed you, uh, we've separately looked at the bottom right corner, you'll see that Hastings County is actually doing very few calls in, in those regions, uh, which means that Prince Edward County has built up the necessary capacity, uh, that they need. Next slide, please. I just wanted to touch basically on the land ambulance service contract. Uh, our service contract with Prince Edward County is set to expire at the end of the year. Uh, the current language is quite dated, uh, needed a bit of a refresh to reflect the current state. Uh, dispute revenue, loosened language was unclear, uh, and we needed to ensure minimum staffing levels were maintained throughout the term of the contract. But most importantly, Prince Edward County doesn't have a spare ambulance, which is contrary to how Hastings County operates, uh, and that needs to align. So however, I will stress that the new contract doesn't change how operating costs are calculated in any way. Next slide, please. So why the need? All Hastings County bases are equipped with spares. Uh, this includes, uh, spares that were added or investments that were made to coincide with the opening of two new stations within Hastings County. Now, combined with all this go, growth, providing Prince Edward County with a loaner vehicle isn't sustainable going forward. And, and an example of this strain right now is we've got a couple of vehicles that were involved in accidents and engines blow. I've got four ambulances for all of Hastings and Prince Edward County that are currently spares. Uh, so there's a lot of strain on our system when we don't have an adequate number. The next slide, please. So, and the benefits of, of all this. I mean, you own the ambulance, uh, and it's not just the vehicle. Uh, it's equipped with stretchers, defibrillators, medical equipment, which are all important to, uh, continuity of operations. So right now, if any of that stuff breaks, the ambulance is at a service and headed to Belleville to find replacement equipment. And on the other side, on the staffing side, we already estimate that at least 120 hours of ambulance staffing time is lost every year as staff await an ambulance to return to base before they're able to provide services again. Next slide, please. So we recognize that this doesn't come without expense. Uh, a fully stocked ambulance costs about a $450,000, uh, and in terms of the new contract, uh, it would be required by 2027 at the latest. Uh, but I'm recommending that you do it in 2026, uh, if this is feasible. Uh, the reason I'm recommending this is that there was a recently decommissioned ambulance, uh, that could be remounted on a new chassis, uh, and you'd be looking at a savings of about $50,000 or $60,000. Uh, and that ambulance simply just can't be parked for a year, uh, waiting for 2027 to, to roll around. So, uh, that's why my suggestion this year, I think the overall budget increase proposed for, uh, Prince Edward County is, is relatively light. We expect operating costs to go up by less than 1%. Um, so right, uh, now might be the right time, uh, to do it. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to touch briefly on this. Uh, we've already launched a, a request for proposals for a 10-year master plan. It's not uncommon for paramedic services to do this, uh, bringing in outside expertise to help forecast future needs. Um, this will be a, a plan for Hastings and Prince Edward as we look, uh, at healthcare needs across the region. I'm hoping it will help inform long-term capital planning, uh, needs more, uh, more accurately going toward. So the plan will look at such things as our anticipated growth, uh, where do you build the next station? Is our service delivery model most optimal? Uh, how many staff will we need at all sorts of different levels over the next few years? So the results of this will likely be available in the fall of 2026. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Baucher. I have a list here already, so we'll, we'll start with Council Mayor, then we'll go to Council Nyman.
I'd just like to thank the chief for the presentation and taking the time to, uh, to, to break out our specific situation, because we don't often see this in, uh, in, at the EMS committee in this format. So I just wanted to, I'll start by just thanking you for that and, um, bringing to council's attention the, the disparity in the cross-border calls and, uh, the advantages that obviously we have with our, um, existing, uh, relationship with, with Hastings County. I have a few more specifics, but I'll, I'll ask in the second round. Thank you.
Uh, Council Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this. I just want to go back to one of the first slides where it was, um, two ambulances were dedicated to Prince Edward County. But, yeah, gonna have to refresh my memory, because I think last budget, last year's budget, uh, or before, I believe you were here, uh, um, making the pitch for another ambulance that would service Prince Edward County. But through this whole presentation, I, I guess I'm just hearing there's only two, and we get the odd one coming from Hastings or, or Belleville, however you want to put it. So I'm just kind of wondering, we, we approved getting that ambulance last year, and I think you want another $450,000 this year, so I'm a little bit confused.
Yeah, through the chair. Uh, so we came looking for a staffing enhancement. We didn't come looking for a new ambulance in 2023, uh, so we didn't, there was no capital investments that were made. Uh, so this year, that's what we're asking for is a spare ambulance.
Yeah. Thank you. Some of that conversation, um, was having that third ambulance in Prince Edward County. That's what it was, but we're not having that, is what I'm he, hearing. So I, I guess I, you know, I'm still confused.
Uh, through the chair, sorry about that, Councilor. So Prince Edward County has only ever had two ambulances. Uh, so one of them went in 2023 from 12 hours a day, seven days a week, to staffing at 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whenever there was a repair needed or an ambulance broke down, we would take an, we'd take a spare ambulance from Hastings County and deliver it for use for a period of time to Prince Edward County. And we're saying that's not sustainable. We really need to have a spare at each of our stations on a go-forward basis to ensure the continuity of our operations.
Okay, thank you. I'll look back into that conversation before budget, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, any further questions? Councilor Pinnell?
Thanks for your presentation. I was looking at the times that you put for, towards the northern end of the county, and unfortunately, I've had, uh, probably close to half dozen times in the last year and a half. And I couldn't believe every time I would have a call made for an ambulance and how quickly there was a response. Every time, they were from Hastings, not from Prince Edward. And, uh, the one thing I did notice was at the hospital, I believe ambulance drivers and assistants and that are having to spend more time at the hospital. I think a lot of work could be done there to try to get them in and, oh, to move on. But thanks for everything yous do, do, and, uh, there's getting to be a lot of people my age that are gonna need ambulances more in the future. So, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Harrison?
Yes, I want to thank you for the presentation. It's certainly, uh, a very, uh, essential service and top of the list for me, anyway. And I think, I want to compliment you partially on what Roy said, the response time has been very good to, uh, with all the constituents I've talked to. I had one question about the one map, which I think was the, uh, the catchment area or something up there. The one area across the bay in Lennox. That was in that one slide there, around Dorland.
Uh, through, through the chair, so that's the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinty new station, so we're operating on the territory.
No, no, down in, uh, in Lennox itself. Right straight across, pretty, keep going. There. That one.
Yeah, I, I believe that's the Tainanega Base that was just opened up, uh, two years ago.
No, Tainanega, Tainanega is way up opposite iceberg. Yeah, that one there, that's over in Lennox.
Yeah, I'd have to have a look at that after and get back to you.
Okay, because it happens that the ward it represents is on this side of the bay, and I kind of wondered, and the response time, even down in Crassie, has been very good, which is where, where I live now. Thank you for that. I had the luxury of, uh, having to go in the ambulance from, uh, Pickton to Belleville last winter, and, uh, one suggestion I might make is that if you're ordering any new ones, please get air ride. It was one of the roughest rides I've ever taken. I think I was in worse shape when I got there and then went out.
Yeah. Through the chair, just, just of note, um, we did have air ride systems on our ambulances years ago. Uh, the challenge is it's not great for this climate, uh, so they were gumming up with salt, uh, and we just couldn't make it, make it work, so, uh, that's the reason we no longer have them on our ambulances.
Well, you're ahead of me, but it was a rough ride.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions before I go back to Council Mayor for the second round? Council McNotten?
Um, oh, Roy, you and I are. That seems better. Um, so it, it is, it is, uh, thank you for all of this information. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to you and your staff for all the work that you do for our community and for all of us who benefited from the work that you do in this community. Um, but there's still the glaring, uh, the glaring spot that covers about 4,000 people, 4,000 to 5,000 people, south end of Amelia'sburg, Hillier, um, and, and a part of Hallwell. Uh, I understand with the very, very remote areas where, um, you know, at the edges here and there, where it is very difficult, geography is challenging, but, um, are there strategies, uh, for the future to sort of look at how we can protect those citizens in that big, um, off-white zone that covers off those 4,000 to 5,000 people, right? Or at least electors, it might be more people, I'm not quite sure, um, in, in the Hillier, Amelia'sburg, Hallwell, sort of crossover zone that are in that off-white area, um, as far with, with sort of, um, your, I, I realize you're going to be doing long-term, um, organizational planning. Is there anything that you have in mind already to try and extend the darker colors into that area so that we can see, um, that population receive a little bit better protection, um, maybe in the shorter term?
Uh, through, through the chair, uh, certainly that would, would need to come with, with more resources. I think currently with just, uh, the two ambulances with, you know, the call volume 24/7, 50% of all your calls being in the Pickton region, uh, is handled by that. So we'd have to look at strategies that involve adding resources to do that. We did a trial, I want to say about five or six years ago, where we actually sent an ambulance to Wellington on standby at one of the fire halls, uh, and we just found that that ambulance ended up getting, just driving back and forth between Pickton and Wellington, uh, all day. So we have had some things in the past. We're looking at growing call volume in the, in Quinty West region, uh, you know, in the next year or so, and whether there's a partnership there that could exist, uh, that would benefit both, uh, both sides of, of the bridge.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go back to Council Mayor.
Yeah, well, it's, it certainly is concerning to see the, um, well, first that 89% of the calls are coming out of, um, out of one of the, uh, the Hastings County bases into that northwest quadrant, and then the excessively long, well, the, the long, uh, response times. So I do appreciate your comments about a, uh, long-term plan to better service that, that area, whether it's a, um, whether it's a new ambulance base somewhere in that northwest quadrant. I think that is going to be a, going to be a, an absolute necessity, and it's something that we need to plan for and I hope to see in, uh, this upcoming plan, right? Because that is, um, well, it's inequitable and it's not, uh, it's, it's really not sustainable to have, um, to have those, um, serviced, you know, from the north, taking your resources away and not providing a good service. Um, so I just wanted to, because when they talked about the, um, the, when Council Pinnell mentioned the, um, the offload times, do you want to speak just briefly on the, um, on the offload agreement and some funding that we had or may have, you know, and variations of that offload funding to, to help that situation?
Yeah, through the chair to Council Menard. Uh, we have offload funding, so it's, it's a grant from the government, uh, to provide services 12 hours a day, seven days a week at Belleville General Hospital, and eight hours a day, seven days a week at Trenton Memorial Hospital. And it's the dedicated offload nursing program, so they have someone assigned to receive, uh, these patients who are framing up ambulance, uh, stretchers and getting those paramedics back at, on the, on the road. Uh, we didn't anticipate our, we didn't receive our anticipated full amount this year. I think it was short by about $50,000, and these funds are never guaranteed. Uh, but luckily, Quinty Health was able to pick up the, the funding deficit, so we didn't have to, uh, cut services. Uh, but those are an example of, of a program that's working to help free paramedics up and get them out on the road faster.
Yeah, quickly, yeah.
Yeah, and just, uh, on the, um, on, on the addition of a, of another ambulance to, to the county for, for a spare, um, I think, well, it, this is absolutely essential and, and part of the agreement, and I just want to make sure that, uh, people know that, uh, this, so for Prince Edward County to go it alone would cost us a significantly more money. So this is part of a partnership agreement, all the, uh, and I'm correct in saying that all the other bases, right, have that, uh, have that? So I just, um, they're really, there, there's, is there any alternatives?
Through the chair, no.
Thank you.
Okay, I see, see no further questions. So can I please get a, a motion to receive this presentation, please? Uh, Council Menard?
Sorry, I don't have.
Oh, seconded by Mayor Ferguson?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Menard Ferguson motioned that the presentation by Carl Baucher, Hastings Quinney Paramedic Services and Connor Dory, Hastings County regarding the new EMS service level agreement and the EMS master plan be received.
Thank you, all those in favor? And that carries. Thank you both. Okay, that will bring us to, uh, Item 5.1, which is Christina Zeiler and Sarah Bobus to address committee regarding the Wellington. and Sarah Bobus to address committee regarding the Wellington Town Hall Foundation's expression of interest. Welcome to you both. I'll throw it over to you and just a reminder that you have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for having us here today. Christina and I are, okay, great. Can you, is this good? Is that good? Yes, great. Thank you for having us here today. I'm Sarah, this is Christina. We're acting as the co-leads on the stewardship team for the Wellington Town Hall Foundation. And we're going to take you through a bit of a summary of our proposal that we've sent in today, as well as some of the rationale behind it and our alignment. 10 minutes is a law, it's not a long time to go through something this dense. So we're going to jump right into it. This is a very, very high-level introduction to the proposal that we have submitted. And I'm hoping that everybody has had a chance to look at the documents that have been submitted, the actual EOI response, as well as some of the summary materials. The long and the short of what we've put forward is the creation of a foundation to preserve and protect the Wellington Town Hall and turn it into a community hub, offering programming for intergenerational demographics. We've proposed a phased renovation plan, which is a responsible way for us to take over that ownership. And we have put together that plan with a very strong and experienced stewardship team that bring capability and expertise from architecture, landscape design, programming, arts and culture, basically everywhere. And so Christina's going to take us through that proposal at a, a little bit more depth.
Yeah, you click. Hello, so I'm going to take us through sort of the, the business plan and the organizational structure. We're essentially have two linked but separate organizations, a foundation that would, and the reason to separate them is mission focus and also funding streams. So the foundation would protect the heritage, raise and manage long-term capital, maintenance and utilities, and it would be governed by a volunteer board. And then the community hub would deliver programming and manage day-to-day activity and be stewarded by an advisory board. And you'll, you'll see this structure come across our whole presentation. So the vision and approach to the whole, the whole project is to create a space for all to gather, learn and connect and to make the Wellington Town Hall a, the site, a catchment for the whole kind of west side of the, of the island, for programming that supports civic, cultural and everyday life of a village. And so we have our core community values laid out here and I won't read through them, but you can see the rationale. So on the next slide, we really see the, the best approach to deliver this kind of programming is to work with existing partners throughout the, the county. Through the consultation process, which we will review, certain gaps are missing. The, the community was asked what was missing in the area and came up with some of these pillars that we're showing here, intergenerational and inclusive programming, arts and wellness, youth and young adult engagement, and then these sort of much broader catchments. The partnership, we've already had some interest from partner organizations across the county. This allows them to extend their programming, to reach out, especially to the west side of the island. So I think we'll go to the next slide. And some of the sort of, the strategy is to, Wellington is a busy place in the summer and it is, there is a lot of activity and there's a lot of tourist activity. This would be, we are splitting our programming between sort of like seasonal, summer programming and winter programming. In the summer, it would be a chance to, again, for tourists and for locals alike to access, access programming through partnership with some of the existing offerings we have in the county. It would also help for partners themselves to be able to extend programming out and to take examples from other communities where there is integration of tourism in a way that services the, the area. So instead of tourism happening to Wellington, to kind of guide it and to integrate tourism and to create a sense of village life, a sense of place. In the winter, this is really where the whole west side and Wellington in general suffers from isolation in the winter. There is a real mental health issue around isolation and loneliness. And this is, I think, where many of us, and I think we can all speak for experiences in our childhood where we were connected with a community space that brought a sense of belonging, a sense of community and a passion about small town and our, our village life and a different way of connecting with neighbors and with newcomers. So if we go on to the, the project phasing, we are suggesting a pre-transition phase where we would develop collectively with staff, a, an MOU that would outline the steps, liabilities, et cetera. It's a chance for, this period would be sort of a 12 to 24-month period where we would be able to do our due diligence to form the foundation and do that work. In our Phase 2, we would take ownership of the building at a nominal fee from the county. And we would do modest improvements to the facility to meet accessibility standards and to be able to start to model out pilot programming, partnership programming. The third phase is where this programming and the capital investments would phase out. And I guess the best example of it is Baxter Arts, which was also a municipal building, surplus municipal building. It was transferred to the community at a nominal fee and it continues today. And it has phased out its programming and its renovation over time. Oh, sorry. Budget. So we, this budget is a very bare-bones budget and it is mainly showing you our thinking. Of course, there is a due diligence period where we can actually see, model out how it would really look. But this programming shows the thinking and it shows the bare bones. So in annual costs, that there would be a total of $85,000 a year to be able to do programming, staff, utilities and overhead. And then the capital campaign would be phased for, we have accessibility and compliance at 300K. That's like a, that's just like a bucket of money. And structural work to the second floor to bring it up to code at 500K roughly. Again, this is early thinking, but it's showing you the strategies, sustainability and that phasing.
So just, I just want to go back now. That's sort of the nuts and bolts of the proposal that we put forward. And we just want to take a moment to talk about how we got here. And it was really through following a process that was collaboratively designed and participated in with, by many of the people in this room, starting in 2023, when there was a recommendation for an EOI working group to, to kick off, to consider the future of the Wellington Town Hall, which then led to the working group being formed in 2024. Thereafter, the Parks and Rec Master Plan Consultancy really highlighted the importance of town halls and community hubs. And then over the course of 2024, 25, there were extensive public consultations with that EOI group and, and staff, open houses and getting the feedback from the public. And those were really, really well-attended sessions and we really heard from the people about what they, what was missing. Those were really the questions that we were asking is what was missing? We do have, we have some things, but what are, what are we really looking for? And, and, and right in the middle, there are just some pictures of the, of the notes that were people sharing their memories of town hall. And I just want to throw that back to what Christina was saying about, everybody sort of has a space that they went to when they were growing up, maybe. Maybe it looks different, but I certainly have one. And it was just very much a place of belonging. And so people were writing different stories about pancake breakfast and, you know, coffee meetups and things like that. But the reality is that everybody's a lot, was very aligned in what it used to be at one point and potentially a future life stage around a place of belonging.
I'm just going to interrupt you quickly, Sarah. Just, how many more slides do you have left?
Two, I can power through it. Four.
Okay, just, just hit motion to.
Sure, motion to.
Counselor McNaughton and Counselor Ferguson, all those in favor? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I will motor. So what we really heard, and this, what you're seeing on the slide here and what I'll just talk about briefly is, is references from the What We've Heard document, which was the document that was published that sort of consolidated what we heard through those sessions. People want space that's offering program for the arts, art gallery featuring local artists, community programming, wellness initiatives, youth events. Definitely, there was a lot about the farmer's market or a place for vendors to set up booths, especially in the off-season, and community hub for social events, you know, targeting all demographics. And then Tourism or Information Center, which is something that could be worked on in partnership with Visit the County. And what people really didn't want was to see a private sale or purchase, to see the building torn down, of course, or turned into a commercial space or a hotel or an Airbnb. And so that feedback was really what drove the criteria of the EOI that then went to market and out for tender for a four-month period from May to, to August. At the same sort of, same sort of time, the asset management plan was finalized, which outlined the mandate to reduce the public-facing facilities by 25%, which is a relevant sort of strategic alignment in our proposal. And so then we submitted this Wellington Town Hall Foundation expression of interest. So that's how we got here collectively, in case you didn't know. And then I just want to take a really quick minute. You guys, you probably already know this because if you've read it, you can, you can see it throughout. But I want to talk about, we talked about the community alignment, but it's also important to talk about council alignment and, and county alignment. And so up on the slide, we've called out four of the strategic pillars where we really think that this plan super, super aligns. One, open and effective local government. As we just went through that process, we worked on that collectively and that was very much a partnership to get us here today. The invest in and protect our rural character as well with a priority on heritage, recreation and culture, and then good infrastructure. These, both of these really also, it's important to mention that the Wellington Town Hall is a critical component of the Wellington Heritage Conservation District designation. And so we sort of have this collective obligation to ensure that we preserve that building. And so not only does it dock into that, but I think it just behoove me not to mention that. And then a community that cares. I mean, that's the core of this entire thing. I think Christina did a really good job explaining that. That's what we're looking for, a space to bring, basically, to collect people from the whole west that don't currently have a place to convene. And then I think this is the acknowledgement, we need to do the, we need to do the acknowledgement of the financial benefit component that is, you know, something we need to discuss here. So yes, there is alignment here naturally with the asset management plan and the mandate to reduce the footprint by 25%. The real financial benefit here, the story is savings. It's a, that's what we're talking about. This is savings over time, the $240,000 in accessibility upgrades that are required, the capital costs required to restore the building and then the overall annual savings. That's, that's the financial benefit of the proposal that we have put forward.
So, yeah, thank you. So this is the stewardship team that we've put together and we've put like bits of our bios up there. But really just to show that this is, we're not alone here. This is a serious group who are coming together with different expertise to put together a very sustainable plan. And if you flip to the next slide, we have started to, this is, there is a larger we here. There's all of us here in this room. There's the intention of council, but there's also a, a great deal of enthusiasm behind this project. And we have, some of our potential partners have written letters of support and individuals have also written letters of support. So it, it has a groundswell of enthusiasm and I think of really of goodwill. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I have a list here, so we'll, we'll start with Counselor Pennell.
We have, is it possible, our, our team is here to answer questions as well? Can we come, all come to the mic and just?
Yeah, if, if there's something specific that they can answer, sure. So we'll start, start with Counselor Pennell. Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Okay. Have you got any idea on the actual cost to get started and who is paying for that? Fundraising or?
Yes, this is what we are proposing, is a foundation. The foundation would be a not-for-profit organization. And if we go forward with an MOU that we would build with the staff, it would be included in there, we would be able to, to actually start a foundation.
Okay. The other thing is, I see here, we're going to save the county $1,100,000. Sounds fantastic.
Sorry, I, I should.
But if that building was sold and the community use buildings that are already available for rent from the county and further as a heritage building, and I, same as you, I want to help heritage buildings. But if the municipality sold that building, it's probably the best way that's going to guarantee the community of Wellington that the building will remain heritage because it already has that. So, you know, you heard earlier, we, $500,000 for a new ambulance, council's going to have to be looking seriously where we're at down the road. So I hope you understand when we consider this.
It's, it's a very good question. It's certainly something that we have all worked on and thought about a lot. So you're, you're very much heard in that. We, but you should also know that this did go to tender for a four-month period to the entire world and nothing came back. So it did go out for sale and there was no expression of interest back. The one and only proposal was this proposal. So that is a condition. We have to be aware of the market right now, which is in a, in a time of correction. So there, there are multiple factors for why no one came to the plate to actually, no one else came to the plate. The savings are hard costs, though. I will remind everyone that. Right now, you are responsible for it. You are responsible for that money and it's allocated. So we point back to that management plan where you're being asked to shrink the footprint by 25%. This fall, falls under that category and it would mean that the money that would be earmarked for this building would be able to. for this building would be able to be real allocated to other facilities, which was part of the asset management plan. So, while we really hear that, this is the rationale that we are standing behind.
Yeah, quick follow-up, Counselor Pennell.
I understand all that. In any way, shape, or form, are you expecting future monies to come from the county towards the project?
No, this is a project where we would be taking it, so the best example of this is Baxter Arts. Baxter Arts was a part of the municipality's portfolio. It was deemed surplus, and it was sold at a nominal fee to an arts and culture organization, and they now run it themselves. So, it's not, there is, it is taking it out of the municipality's portfolio.
Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this. So, a couple of questions, and I guess I might as well get the first one out of the way, is you talk about it being a hub, and it's not just in Wellington. Everybody talks about having a hub where everybody kind of goes and, you know, make it feel like a community. So, the question is, and it's asked every time, how many hubs do we need? You know, we have the arena, we got all kinds of rooms and stuff that municipality, it's a great cost to run that. And then, you know, you're going to have a hub over here and then a hub here. So, how many hubs do we really need that is, and will they service the community? Are we going to have too many hubs? So, that's the first question. I don't know if you want to answer that first?
I mean, I'll just jump in and say that I think that this is identified based on public consultation of what is currently missing. And so, that was the feedback from the public of the exact sort of portfolio of programming that we're talking about isn't currently being offered anywhere else. So, in acknowledgement that there's lots in the west side...
In the west side, you can travel to Bloomfield, you can travel, there isn't something in the west side.
Yeah, I, like, what I mean was, you know, so Wellington, right, they would have a hub, Bloomfield and then Picton, like, so I'm not talking about a hub for the whole community. Each community had their own hub, but if you have two or three, is it going to be utilized? You know, are we going to have too many hubs in the area? That was the question. But anyway, did you want to answer it or...
Yeah, I think it's an emphatic no, because right now, people do travel to Picton to access services, and we already have, so the, one of the elements that was deemed missing was arts and culture and wellness, and people are traveling all the way to Picton to receive those services. And many of those service providers in, so the Prince Edward Arts Council has stepped up and said that they would be one of the groups and the Department of Illumination as well, and they would like to extend programming. They are constantly being asked to bring the programming more to the west of the island, but they don't have spaces to do it. So, that ability to do that, that kind of partnering would be, it's just one of the small examples of how that could be extended.
Okay, yeah, I ask one more question, and I'll wait. So, then, I didn't get the exact number, but I think it's close to $1 million is what the whole project was going to cost, I think you had on the one slide. So, I guess, and I'm not quite understanding how this whole agreement works, but is the $1 million, you need the $1 million before the agreement can get signed? I guess, I'm just kind of thinking, is the building going to be used in the near future? Or when does it, you take, when does the agreement come into effect and you need the $1 million? And is it, that's going to be all fundraising, I guess, right?
I can take that one. Yeah. So, this first phase is the MOU phase, and that's sort of just the due diligence to validate the numbers there. And I think you're referring to the $850,000 on the slide that Christina was presenting. Right out of the gate, we know that, and these are numbers we haven't been in the building ourselves yet to assess, right? So, this is why we're asking for the initial MOU. But right out of the gate, the estimate is around $250,000 in upgrades just to meet baseline accessibility requirements. So, that's the first phase. Once we, once we get access to the building, we would go in and validate those numbers, and a concurrent work stream is building the foundation to start the fundraising, applying for grants, and doing all that's required to raise that initial fund. As soon as those, we validated the numbers and we built the foundation, that's when the transaction would happen. And there's no, there's no financial obligation from the county thereafter. So, as soon as the transaction happens, ideally for a nominal fee, as soon as that transaction happens, that's where the savings begin for the municipality, because that's when we then do the baseline accessibility upgrades to open the door, and we pilot programming. And that's when the foundation is starting to raise money, and there's actual capital and revenue building there. And at the same time, the programming is also bringing in funds. And then, we move into the second phase, which is the further renovations that are required.
I have Counselor Brainy.
Thank you, Chair Anglestorfer. I appreciate the thought and the work that you've put into this. I guess my concern, and I may be very frank with all of you. First point, the heritage building itself is a heritage building in the county and is protected. So, I know there was a comment in the presentation about the fear of it being torn down. It's not going to be torn down. Secondly, there is a huge recreation center built in Wellington to serve as programming. It's a state-of-the-art facility that is right in Wellington. Being a counselor in Hillier, being in the West, it's used quite frequently from residents. Also, Hillier Hall, there's programming that takes place very regularly there. I guess, three years ago, early on into this term of council, I brought forward a motion to part ways with properties that weren't being used, were being in disrepair, to try to find funds to put forward for things that really were paramount and tangible, things that we needed to address. Since that motion was approved and supported by this council, we haven't sold a single outhouse in three years. It's getting to a point where I appreciate, I get the nostalgia. I've been to the pancake breakfast in the Wellington Hall, and I've been consistent with my messaging on this. It gets to a point that, I know you mentioned the $250,000. I was hearing three years ago that it was going to be anywhere between $300,000 to $500,000 just to make the building viable. The second floor hasn't been used in years. I believe the last time there was any tangible use for this hall was for the last election with the clerk's office in there. But I don't want to feel hard, I just, I just can't support, if it were up to me, myself personally, I would have put a for-sale sign up. This had, the building did, yeah, there was an expression of interest. We have not put this building up for sale to see what potentially is out there. That's what I would have done. We've gone through this process, and I feel bad for you folks because you've spent a lot of time, you've gone through a process, and I just, I just, I just see this municipality is just spinning its wheels constantly. We're spending money like a bunch of sailors, and we're not getting to the crust of what we need to do to actually put money into infrastructure, into roads, into things that are tangible, the community. And I understand the nostalgia, I get it completely, I understand, but I just don't see this as being a viable scenario for us to move forward. It's, we need to make some tough decisions, and sometimes it's hard for the community to accept. But I believe firmly that we should put this building up for sale and see what, see what's out there. The building's going to survive, it's not going to be torn down, it's always going to be a building that's going to be significant in the community and the historic district. But I can't, I want to see what happens. We need to start parting with properties, or we're never going to get anywhere down the road. And it's a tough leadership decision to make. And I feel bad about having to say this because I get it, I get how you feel, I get the nostalgia, but I need to make, I need to make a tough leadership decision on this and do what I think is right, not only for my residents in Hillier, but what I think we need to start the ball rolling and parting ways with some of these properties. We're accumulating, it, I'm not going to say anymore, it's getting out of hand.
Yeah, let me just answer it, and then I'll have Bill answer for, as well. Just to remind you, I hear the practicality in your voice, and I agree. But I do think that this proposal answers that very clearly. I don't think that Wellington Town Hall should bear the burden of a larger conversation that you're having right now, and you're having a conversation about your asset management plan, which seems to be now in good order after you have voted on it in October of this year. So, I see that this project actually comes in line, and I don't think that it's fair to have the burden of a much larger conversation come down to one building. This takes it off of your books, it does it quickly and effectively. We also have to look at the market conditions that we're in. This did go out to tender, and nothing came back. Nothing, four months. So, it's not as if this process came out of nowhere, it wasn't considered, and it's not practical. This is a practical way to deal with a larger conversation that you're talking about, and Wellington does not need to bear, Wellington Town Hall, the one singular building, does not have to take, bear the weight of a much larger conversation. So, I'll let Bill answer that as well.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just going to talk about something very specific here. I'm not arguing with any of the concerns that are on the floor. But I spent five years on the Baxter Arts Center, and I was one of them, on the board, and the beginning, I was not there in the very beginning, but it was quite correct that it was transferred, the ownership was transferred from the municipality because it was considered surplus to their needs. It's called the Baxter Arts Center because originally it was a canning factory. The building was not in great shape. The people that came to together, there were a lot of people in the community, artists and concerned citizens, to try and do something with this that would make it very viable and long-term, and that's actually what's happened. When I joined the board, they found several things about the building that were just awful. One of them was there was structural damage to the foundation along the front of the building, that had to be fixed. That's something you can't mess around with, you just had to do that. Secondly, it was, well, there were a set of stairs up to the main level, there was one level, but there was quite high off the street. So, what did we do about that? We said, okay, we know that there needs to be a ramp, a way of getting people safely and up to that floor. At that point, it was very obvious that it was going to be primarily for arts education, both teaching and people wanting to learn, and there was a huge support from the broader community. Anyway, to get that started, we hired a landscape architect, and they came up with a tremendous, if you've been by there, there's an absolutely beautiful ramp that leads people accessible to the building, gets them right up to the front door. The front door itself, guess what? Push-button. None of this hardware that is very difficult to operate. So, all of those things were thought out in a lot of detail. The building, there's no parking there. So, what happens? People walk down from the main street in Bloomfield, and they get in there. We've looked at all these things for this building, and sure, there's some things that are similar, but I have to tell you that I'm absolutely confident, well, also, the funding came for a lot of that building from both government funding and private funding, considerable private funding that was raised by the board, and they did an excellent job at doing that. I don't see any reason why that can't happen here. Why the private sector? I really believe they would step forward, and there's a lot of people that have talked to myself and other members of our group that have said, yeah, we'll support it. Well, of course, it's going to be in the pudding to how much that is, but we're pretty confident, we're very confident that there's enough interest out there to make this work. And while I hear the...
Okay, Bill, I'm going to just, I have a whole long list of questions, so we'll go to those questions.
Okay, sure. I'd be glad to have any questions, or somebody else can take them as well.
Yeah, so just a reminder, we'll stick to questions to the deputants, and we'll save the opinions for later when we get to the staff report. So, I'll go to Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank you all for coming up with this concept. I think it's a great concept, and unlike what some have said, I think, I think this is much more than a hub that you're proposing. It's programming by, you know, organized and put on by the foundation. And this takes great liability off the county's hands. If we look at the fiscal aspect of it, I'd happily sell it to you for a dollar because it gets us out of all of this maintenance and capital works that is otherwise required. If council remembers, we had the IM's report, Roth IM's report on this, it's one of the worst buildings in our portfolio. So, I'd be happy to be rid of it and very happy if your concept can get carried out. So, thank you.
Okay, next I have Counselor McNaughton.
Thank you. Ditto. What John said. So, and thank you very much. It looks like there's a lot of bench strength in the room, and just, I've used a lot of programs, my family has used programs at Baxter quite a bit, and the accessibility ramp, that was, and we saw that go in, and it looks like you've already got some landscape architecture on your team, and you've got like a lot of the pieces that they had to work out and potentially contract out, you've got some in-house expertise already to undertake that. I think it's a great deal for us to be able to keep that building in community use without municipal burden. I think that's excellent. Thanks. I'm excited to support this.
Okay, thank you. I think I saw Counselor Grosso with his hand up earlier. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Sarah and Christine, great, great presentation, I love it. I do agree with what Counselor Brainy is saying, but Sarah, I've seen what you did with the Glassstone Hotel, and it was unbelievable, took a dive bar and just created a cultural arts center, live music, a bar, hotel, boutique hotel. And let me add, I tipped many, many pints of beer back there. But, so, yeah, I think it's a great idea. It takes, you know, just like Counselor Hirsch was saying, it takes all that headache away from us, and I just think it's an amazing idea, and we should really, really forge ahead with that. Oh, sorry, I do have a question. What would be the highest generator of revenue that you would assume that would have there?
Specifically, the plan is made out. I have been privy to being on multiple boards. So, I have seen how arts organizations work, sometimes when they own buildings, sometimes when they're renting buildings. So, we were looking for models that give us the best ability to offer programming. So, the model that we're looking at has been used at the Evergreen Brickworks, it's been used at the TET Center in Kingston, and it's also been used at the Youngs Theater in Toronto as well. So, the idea is that the foundation owns the building, and they raise the money through capital, through government funding, through hook and by crook. They raise the capital and an endowment to run the building. The programming wing makes the, applies for funding, creates programming that may have small revenue streams, but they do not carry the burden of raising capital for the building for ongoing maintenance fees. So, this is a very practical solution, and it's been used in a lot of other organizations. But it is too much of a burden to put on a programming arm that it raises enough capital to look after a building. And I know that dearly from a lot of different organizations. So, that's why this structure is in place. Also, sometimes funding will fall into, there are... Also, sometimes funding will fall into, there are programs that only want to deal with facilities and there's ones that only want to deal with programming. So this, this allows it to work, separate but linked.
Thank you so much.
I'll go to Mayor Ferguson and we'll go to Counsel Nyman and we'll probably move on.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, you all, all of you, with the exception of one who's not here due to travel arrangements. But thank you for bringing this forward. I, I will say off the top, this takes all the right boxes for me because it does potentially remove a building, as Counsel Hirsch mentioned, from our responsibility. This summer, I spent a great deal of time at the Wellington Market, as Dave Smythe can attest, because he and I spoke often as we looked across the street from the market as to what that building could be and should be. And my, my personal view is it is vitally important to the community, that it be used by the community. The, it, it can be a significant contributor to the, the livelihood or the economy of, of Wellington. That and, and of course, the, the hopefully expanding market across the street in the church. So I think this is a, this is a, a proposal well worth consideration and exploration by, by the municipality and our municipal staff. I do want to ask concerning the, the activities and the programming, what you're basically proposing is filling the town hall with activities that any one of our town halls are currently or could be currently providing. In other words, it's effectively going to be a town hall, is it not? Basically? In basic, no, no, in, in basic terms. I mean, it's going to have different types of, of, just let me finish. It's going to have different types of programming, but there are going to be groups that are going to be using it and, and programming that's going to be created for the public to participate in, right?
Through the chair, thank you. Yes, I, I understand where you're coming from and maybe we're throwing out some terms like hub. Maybe there's a, maybe too many hubs out there, but in the end, this is a building that will be for the community, probably doing similar activities that had happened before, maybe some new, and some very new ideas. But in, in, in the end, it's, it's a, you know, it builds community in, in a building that's heritage. And to Counsel Brainy's point about it being torn down, that was a comment from an individual at one of the open houses. They don't want it torn down. It's got designation, can't be torn down, but they also don't want it to be a designated heritage building and be a hotel. You know, in, in private hands, it's lost to the community after that, no matter how heritage it is. So it, it's really, it, it's a continu-, it's been closed for how many years? I don't know if anyone can name it now, but it's a continuation of its original purpose after it was a school way back when. So it's, it's community oriented and, and has, has a benefit to the downtown core. You know, it, it's, it's closed right now. It's sitting there dormant. It's costing money to heat it right now. And I think this passionate team has put together a great proposal. Thank you.
Yeah, that was my point, that this is a town hall.
I understood it, yeah. So a critical difference, and we did go through this quite a bit with the working group and with the staff. We were making a differentiation between, the town halls currently right now do offer some municipal programming, maybe a dinner or something, but mainly they are used by community groups to rent out. That was clearly seen as a double in our town because of the arena and because of other places where you can go and rent space for a group. This is critically different in that it's offering programming. So it's much more akin to Baxter Arts than it is to the arena, for example. So that is the critical difference.
Okay, well, I'm fully supportive of moving forward to explore this further with the staff, hopefully leading to a positive resolution. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to be clear, I'm the one that brought up the word hub, but I brought it up because it was in your presentation. So I just want to make that clear.
We use that word because it was used in the, in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and it was identified as a need across the county. And then also it sort of was a catch-all phrase. We'd love to come up with another phrase because it's an overused phrase.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So my, my question, I want to go back to the $250,000 because I'm still unclear on what you're proposing here. The $250,000, like you're saying you want to get the agreement, but you're not, I don't understand, you're saying it's costing $250,000 before you do sign the agreement and who's that from? Like Prince Edward County has to pay? Are we paying 250 or?
No, that's, that's, that's our cost. There is no cost to the county once we go into the transaction. So the transaction is when we initiate that, that $250,000 investment in accessibility upgrades. That's on us.
And when's the transaction? That's the other part that I, I'm not sure what you're saying.
So our request today is to move into the, to initiate an MOU so that we can get into the space and validate the numbers, you know, all of this information, because it has been a minute also since people have been in there to understand, you know, if there's been further deterioration, if there's other things that need to be done. So that $250,000, that, that number comes from information that we've been given that talks about the ramp, that talks about the widening of door frames, the accessibility, some additional structural enhancements, very baseline. What we're looking for is the, the support to move forward with an MOU so we can get in there and validate those numbers. And whatever that price point is for the next, for those upgrades, that's on us, but we need to first go in there and understand what, the scope of what we're really looking at, build the foundation to fundraise for it and flip over into the transaction so that we can do it.
Okay, and then the 12 to 24 months, I don't know what that's for.
That's the MOU phase. So, and that is a completely flexible timeline based on if there's key milestones from this group or if, and also what we uncover. But we, we will determine that in partnership as we develop the MOU.
So are you good with 12 months? I'm just trying to, I'm thinking down the road here that in the next 10 minutes, so I'm just-
Yeah, and I think also like that timeframe is just there because we have to write the MOU with staff, get it passed by council, you know, things don't go super fast and we have to put together a, a foundation. So the 12 to 24 is a reasonable, sustainable amount of time. In that time, the, the cost to the county is the maintenance of the building at a base level, which has been estimated at $19,000 a year. That's the cost. And then a transfer.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll move on now then. Can I please get a motion to receive today's deputation? Mayor Ferguson seconded by Counsel Nyman?
Ferguson, Nyman, motion that the deputation by Christine Seidler and Sarah Bowes regarding the Wellington Town Hall Foundation's expression of interest be received.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you. So that'll move us to comments from the audience. I have none registered today, but I'll look out to the audience and see if there's any members that would like to make a comment. None? Okay, so that'll bring us to item 7.1. We have Prasanna Gunasakara and Leslie Pavan, Perry Group Consulting Limited, to present to the committee regarding the Planning Services Review and Journey Mapping Report. And I believe they're joining us on Zoom, so we'll, we'll flip it over to them to give us a run-through.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, thank you very much, Chair and the council. Just want to make sure that the presentation is on the screen.
Just hold on one sec, we'll get Ben to, to put it up on the screen for us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
It is there. Go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to present the planning review and the journey mapping report to you. My name is Prasanna Gunasakara and Leslie Pavan is with me. We are both from Perry Group Consulting. Next slide, please. We have a quick agenda. We'll be talking about the background findings very quickly and then we want to spend most of the time talking about the future state and the recommendations and the budget. Next, please. Next. We spoke to, during, during the discovery, we spent most of the time in the discovery phase. We spoke to a lot of people, more than 50 interviews, meetings, workshops. We spoke to end customers, internal departments, external agencies, as well as some comparable municipalities as well. And if we summarize at a $50,000 level, this is what we heard from your stakeholders in the planning process. Staff are dedicated, but maybe stretched to thin. We need more standards in the planning process. We need to build trust with our residents. There's a need for better education and clear communications was very clear. There's a desire to have better timelines. Everyone wants approvals done in a faster timeframe, that, something that we heard. Servicing and interim control by law, creating issues or delays in the process. Need to revisit the two-step approval process. Applicants want clear path forward. They want to learn, get their information early on about their applications, which way it will be going. Collaboration between staff could be more seamless. And then finally, an online digital tracking system similar to the building permit system that you have, that your residents are used to. Next, please. So that's what we heard and then we did other research, reviews, workshops to understand from ourselves what the current state is. And this is a summarized version of that. You will find in the, in the attached report more details about our findings. Your processes are manual and fragmented, so you're using a lot of paper today. Planning processes lack standard operating procedures, service level agreements. So from consistence perspective, some, some lacking there. Effective and timely communication challenges. There is, your staff is dedicated. We looked at about eight other comparable municipalities to see your staff strength. You are right in the middle. You're not over-stocked, you're not under-stocked at this point with the, with the current volume of applications that you are managing. There has been some staff turnover and roles and responsibilities not clearly defined, so we want to support with that. Lack of automation, especially when planning is a geography-related function and GIS can play a major role. Your GIS team had done a lot of work already, but we see that there's a lot of potential there. As well as a tracking system will help the, the overall process. Data scattered across emails, network drives, paper files and so on, so there's no single truth that's creating inefficiencies and the customers' lack of process awareness. So we work with the Planning Act, the Provincial Planning Act, and there are certain timelines, certain requirements that we need to adhere to. And we see that we need to be more, do more communication and education to our customers as well. So, next one, please. So based on the discovery and the findings, what we understand is that the county is in a really good position with the new leadership to, to reset the way the planning services are provided. You have a new director, new manager, and you are very well in good, in a, in a good place to implement the recommendations coming out of this report. The end goal that we are trying to achieve is to build trust among the community in the planning process. And we want to do it using three pillars, consistency, transparency and efficiency. So those are the three pillars that we think will bring that trust back with the community. Next, please. Next, one more, actually two more. So going down to recommendations, we have over 80 recommendations. I'm going to take you through very quickly some of the summary highlights. The idea is to build transparency, efficiency and consistency. And we have divided the recommendations into four functional areas, people-related, process-related, communication-related and technology-related. I'll take you through the first set of quick wins. We also identify some quick wins, something that you can implement today. The team has already started implementing some, some of these. These are, these changes do not require any budget, budget requirements, so these are some things that we can immediately implement. Next slide, please. So out of the quick wins, these are a couple of highlights. Start tracking applications consistently. We have helped with the template. Invite applicant and agencies to pre-consultations. So pre-consultation meetings will be more open, transparent with the applicant at the table. We want council to be updated more frequently and proactively. Re-look at the two-step process. So we looked at the last six years of data. You receive about, you process about 1,000 applications related to planning and about 50% of those, more than slightly over 500 of those are the simplest ones, consents. So we think that there are better ways of processing low-risk, low-complex applications. So need to look at the two-step process. Communicate to councillors on inquiries, pre-consultation meetings prior to reports going into the committee. Establish semi-annual information sessions with development community. These are to understand any system-wide issues or challenges that they are facing so that we can adjust and deliver a better service. Assign development concierge liaison function to staff. So this is to facilitate any challenging applications to navigate through the process and develop a checklist for staff to follow for processing of applications. So these are a subset of some of the quick wins. Next, please. Under people, we have, the, the key item here is the roles and responsibilities. So we started, we built a template with the staff and this is something that the team can continue. Roles and responsibilities identified, developing standard operating procedures and terms of reference. Again, something that you can bring in from another municipality and then adjust to the county. These are common SOPs and DORs available in the, in the field. Formal onboarding and ongoing training for the staff. With the high turnover, you will need a program to train your staff continuously. And organizational structure review to support career growth, especially in the planning staff levels, we see multiple layers there. I think flattening, flattening that out will help the organization. Next, please. Under process improvements, delegation of applications to staff, we spoke about those consents, 50% of your time is spent on those. Streamlining application approvals by reviewing public meeting requirements, clarify roles in public meetings and looking at the, the development lifecycle from an integrated perspective. So planning, engineering, economic development, building all in, in amalgamation. Because when you look at your residents, they come up with an idea, it's a project for them, but we have multiple departments supporting that entire project. So we want them to see the entire aspect of the project at the beginning itself. So- So proposing an integrated view to the future state. Next place. Under communications, proactively update the council. So we want the team to let you know when there are new applications coming in and what the challenges around those, so that you are prepared. Redesign the planning website to, with the simple, simple language, user, seamless user access to information so that they can consume public information online, online. Centerize development applications on a have-your-safe platform. You already have a really good platform there and with a lot of good features. So we think planning applications should be shared there. Conduct structured pre-consultation meetings. And finally, provide online and information sessions to help residents and developers understand planning requirements. Planning act keep changing, and we need to have those sessions to go out and explain and educate our stakeholders. Next place. And the final section is technology. We think that there's a lot of opportunity here. An end-to-end integrated digital tracking system. And you already have a system in the building department. And we have looked at its capabilities, and it does good potential to expand that system into the planning department as well. So it will reduce the cost, overall cost. You don't have to go, go back to the, go out to the market and purchase a brand-new system. The existing system will be sufficient for the planning department as well. In digitizing, what we expect is to automate some of the administrative tasks. And that will release some of the staff time as well, so that they can spend more quality time in reviewing applications than administrative tasks. GIS is, is paramount, the geography, geographic information system. You already have one, and you are already doing some good work. But GIS can help your planning staff way more in the future. There's a lot of potential there as well. Finally, we want to track data. We need to analyze data, the system. When you're using a system to track information, you can do data analytics, key performance indicators, and find out in the long run, where are your bottlenecks? Where can you further improve your process by analyzing the data? Next place. So we expect, once these improvements are implemented, your future state, from a transparency perspective, your customers and all stakeholders involved will be informed. Liaison functions will be established. Council updated frequently. Application status and processes shared openly and improved public consultations. So the transparency aspect of the, of the proposal of the future state will be tackled under these circumstances. Next place. From consistency perspective, all applications track consistently since you are using a system to track those. Terms of reference, SOPs, standard operating procedures. Make sure that you, you have defendable, predictable outcomes. Roles and responsibilities will be defined and explained to the stakeholders. Staff will be trained. Application approval process will be defined with standard checklist. Next place. And from efficiency perspective, with the digital tracking system, you will have the system implemented and automation to assist staff, 27 access to cus, 24/7 access to customers since it's online. Data analytics for decision-making, easy access to all stakeholders, GIS-enabled intelligence coming through to the, to the staff. And the two-step process streamlined with delegated authority. As, next place. As with any initiative, there's cost and resources required. And we have looked at high-level estimates to implement this in four years. And the total comes to, I apologize, we made a mistake, this 190,000 in the last row should be 210,000 to 278,000. It's a mathematical error that I made, sorry about that. We also want to let you know that we are proposing, based on the amount of change and the recommendations, that you, you will need a dedicated staff to manage this, at least for the first two years, 2026 and 2027. We have not budgeted for it, but that is a critical item to tackle, to understand that based on the amount of work, you will need someone in the planning department to be assigned to manage this program. And to ensure success, next place. One more. We think these aspects should be paid special attention to make sure that we, we are successful in implementing this program. Number one is leadership and governance. We are proposing a steering committee within the staff led by the director will be, will be responsible for implementation. Communication with stakeholders is paramount. We think that there should be continuous consultation with, with all the stakeholders during this period. Change leadership is, is paramount as well. This future state will change the way we provide services and a formal change management plan to be in place. And finally, monitoring and continuous improvement and reporting back to council about the progress of the program. I know it's a lot of information that we went through, and the report has more details. We are more than happy to answer any questions if you may.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody that has questions for the consultant? We'll start with Counselor Pennell.
Thank you. When you're going through, I noticed the one sheet there where there should be a checklist for staff. But if we have a checklist for staff, should we not also have a checklist that we give out to whoever wants to do something? This is what I got to do exactly. We've had problems in the past where it's went on, one thing is done, and then all of a sudden, something new, and then something new. So is that part of the plan to, something very specific? If I want to get something going, this is what I got to do upfront, then I have a good idea of costing and everything else.
Absolutely. Through the, through the chair, thank you for the question, Counselor. The terms of reference and standard operating procedures that we are providing, that we are proposing is exactly for that. So you will have different checklists for applicants and different checklists for the approval process, but it will be transparent. The steps that you need to go through, the documents that you need to provide as part of an application will be clearly available on your website. So we are proposing changing and updating your website and the information online as well, so that your customers, your residents can come and self-serve themselves.
The one other thing that I haven't saw mentioned at all, that I feel is important, and we no longer do an inspection prior to a comment, and somebody, you can do everything you want, but if you don't have a visual look for drainage and stuff, to know what to ask for. And I saw many come before council or planning board in the past where they haven't got a clue what the actual drainage is or anything else. Now staff, unfortunately.
Thank you for the question, for the proposal, Counselor, through chair. Leslie, you may jump in if you want to. I think one of the recommendations is a site visit. Leslie, you want to jump in?
That's, that's correct, Prasanna. We were recommending that these site visits be conducted, maybe even before pre-consultation or certainly thereafter, because there's all kinds of things you need to see on-site. And we've made it clear that the planner that's assigned to the file is the one who needs to coordinate it and invite the other departments. And if it's an outside agency, I know conservation authorities are a little bit in flux right now, but whoever needs to be there, needs to be there and get those, those questions answered on-site. And it also helps the applicant explain what, what they're doing on-site.
I'm going to go to Counselor McNaughton.
Thank you. So just to start, and I, I'm going to ask the chair at some point if I can be able to extend the question to both staff and presenters.
I think what we'll do is we'll do consultants now, and then we're going to put it on the floor, and then we can go to staff after.
Sure, okay. So just initially, I'd like to thank you for representing some of, I, I see some of my interview with your team reflected in, in your, in what you've returned to us with. And, and I see some of the ideas that I think our staff members certainly were considering. So it seems like there's been some, some relative consensus, which is, which is very nice to see for some things. One of the comments that I brought forward when we met and was that there are a couple of times where we've seen the accessibility tax. And that is one thing that I don't see represented necessarily. I see lots of great things, including step-down public, step-down public processes for, like public meetings for very small and complicated files, for example. That's really great, and something I would love to see. But one of the things that we talked about was if there were other municipalities that had something that, that softened or removed processes for anyone who needed to make adjustments or who had to adjust their properties to meet their own accessibility needs that lay outside of standards, like just putting in a ramp. And I'm just wondering if you saw that in other municipalities, or if you see how that can be accommodated with our existing framework or the framework that you're bringing forward to us? Is there flexibility there to ensure that people with accessibility needs can be met with the least amount of red tape?
I personally haven't seen that in other municipalities, but if that's something that council would like to pursue, I mean, certainly, you know, they can give that direction to staff and they carry out an investigation. As you start to make more and more exceptions to your processes, it gets very hard to administer. So that's my only one caution, because accessibility is, is very important and giving those people a break and streamlining. And maybe that's something a liaison function could help the person get through the process. But environment is important here. You start getting competing interests, and then it does get a bit more complicated. But certainly, council could give that direction to staff, and they could develop a process for that.
Thank you. And I appreciate the comp, the complexity that you mentioned. And I did note, I can't remember where in your report, the idea that if there's, if there's a low-impact development, something that is going to have little impact, that that is where some streamlining can be envisioned. Thanks.
Counselor Brainy.
Thanks, Chair of Service, for, I will, I was just going to say I will move this motion, and I'll make my comments at that time.
Are any other questions for the consultant? Counselor Harrison.
Yes, I'd thank you very much for the report. I found it quite interesting. I think you've done a thorough job in pointing out quite a few of the problems that I hear from constituents. And one thing you suggested that I think is very important, has been lacking extremely, has been the site visit situation. All the severances are not necessarily the same, and there's different factors there. And I think the staff particularly has to have a little more flexibility on the interpretation of the plan. Because the way the book, if they go totally by the book, it often does not work and does not satisfy the, either the municipality or the applicant. And another positive, I think you pointed out here, is I think that communication to councillors on inquiries and pre-consultation meetings prior to the reports are, would be quite an important step, because then the applicant particularly is going to get some feedback on what issues he needs to address. Thank you.
Okay. I see no other questions for the consultant. So Counselor Brainy, if you want to put this on the floor, I need a second, please. Counselor Pennell.
So the motion I'll put forward is, is, is read in, in our report, that the presentation of the Perry Group Consulting Limited regarding the Planning Services Review and Journey Mapping Report, that council receive Report DS-71-2025, and that council endorse the Perry Group's consulting report and direct staff to implement the recommendations, roadmap and phases for implementation, and return to council with a process update before the end of the first half of 2026. And if I could speak to that, too? First and foremost, I'll begin. When I put this motion forward back in the springtime, it, I, it was always about finding a way forward, it's never about finding faults. And I think we all, all realize that. These things are a healthy process, and, and already in the last six months, I, I've seen dramatic improvements. I, I have full confidence with Crystal and Angela. Even the communication that, that is occurring in, in our processes, this is a tool that's going to help this department. It's going to help guide leadership to improving a process, you know, not for us all, but, but for residents in Prince Edward County. And I think these reviews, to have things done externally every five to seven years, is always a good basis point to see what, what, what recommendations are out there, how we can always make improvements. And I, I believe we're, we're really off to a, a great start. I, I have to say, I'm over the moon with the changes in this department and what I've seen personally, not only around our council table, but the feedback that I've been getting from residents, too, that has been so positive about the changes that we have made and the, and the direction that we're going. So congratulations to everyone involved. And I'm so happy that everybody sees the benefit of this. It's, as I said, with many of these reviews and things that I've talked about in the last three years, it's always about finding a way forward, it's never about finding fault. And I think this was, was a really worthwhile process that was a good investment for the county to make. And it's, it's going to be a good tool and navigate things for staff, council and residents as we move forward. So I'm, I'm happy to move it. It's, I'm over the moon about it. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't know if this is the place to ask it, but I'm going to ask it. So we're trying to make it better, the planning process and everything. But I, I guess we've been asking this for a while, is are we charging developers for our time? So, because I know, I think we put a lot of time working with developers and going out and checking developments. But it's the taxpayers that's paying for that, the go-out check and everything else. Is there something that, we can put in there for that also, or no?
It's good? Okay. So through the chair, to Counselor Nyman. So yes, so we do have planning application fees. So anything that we take in, we do have funds that are put towards those functions. So we did have previous So we did have previously, when I was working with the county, we went through the exercise of actually looking at how much time each position related to each function takes, and we put out what that amount would be, what we have to work towards. Often, it's difficult to charge that entire amount back at one time. You kind of work towards making sure you're full cost recovery. So we do that every time we do a fee review. We're looking to make sure we're moving as close as we can to full cost recovery, so we will continue to do that as we move forward. We also have some other mechanisms that we use. So we have cost acknowledgement agreements, we take deposits with each of our applications. We also do that with planning for subdivisions and site plans. We have deposits and fees that we use, so if we are sending someone out for an inspection, that's what those fees are for. We also do have just a general function related to the Planning and Development Services Department that does go to the general levy because we are providing a service to any resident that calls in and asks for information. We help point them to certain areas, we help do work like that. So there is some that isn't full cost recovery that goes towards the general levy, but we do recover as much as we can through fees, through deposits, and we charge that back to developers and applicants. So if it's a resident, if they're asking specifically for an application to be processed, that's user pay.
Okay, yeah, follow-up?
Okay, thank you, and it sounds good. But if I'm doing a subdivision, and, you know, I have, so an inspector, engineering goes out, or roads department, or water and wastewater for doing testing or turning valves or anything like that, does that get charged to the developer at that time? Because if not, all that time that is spent by municipal employees going to work on that subdivision that's not assumed yet, the taxpayers are paying for that. So I'm just, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
So through the Chair. So, yes, we do have deposits and we do have fees that would relate to those specific functions. So we do recover as much as we can through that. That is also why we try to limit, often, we try to distill down to the finite amount of touches we need to have. So this idea of making sure we're not repeating work, making sure we're not responding more times than we need to, making sure things are concise and we're following internal procedure, that's going to also help us control so that we're not doing more than we need to, we're not repeating work that we maybe have done or someone else did and we didn't know that they were doing that. We're going to tighten up all of our policies and procedures so that we have specific processes, and those processes, we know how much time for staff they're worth, and then that is what we will keep using to infer how much those fees and deposits should be for those developers, that we are getting that user pay for development.
Okay, Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we've had, I have a comment, I guess, and a question. We've had a wholesale change in management since this report was commissioned. I just want to say, I think it is, these recommendations are all great. I think some of the phase-in that's suggested makes sense. I especially like all of the IT aspects as a focus, all the tracking and the GIS improvement and stuff. I think that's all really important. I just wondered, as a question for Angela and perhaps Crystal, since you are the new kids on the block, I say kids because you're a lot younger than me. Are you happy with how this has turned out? I mean, do you support this fully? I take that from the report, but just like to hear it from you.
Through the Chair to Counselor Hirsch. Yeah, I didn't see any issues with it. I think there are minor ones that maybe can't be fully facilitated by our staff and everything. Having, I think the one that stands out is having every application have a have-your-save page that might not be feasible for every application, but more complex ones, I don't see a problem with that. But, yeah, overall, these changes aren't needed from planning because, you know, as currently, it was just going, everyone was getting to the finish line, but we're all getting there at different ways. So we have to just make it all the same way, we're doing everything consistently, and this will help with that, this reset.
And I'll just add on through the Chair. I just would point that, the same, we're in agreement with the majority of all of the recommendations might just be how we implement those. That might be something that we feed into from what we know of the county and our experience. And I would just highlight as well, when you see some of the slides and you look at the report, sometimes something for us, you look at quick wins, well, there's 19 of them. When you start getting so many quick wins, they become not so quick anymore. So I just would hope for the committee and your roles as council to have a bit of patience with us as we're implementing these. They did lay out as well that it's a five-year work plan, so we're going to try our hardest to hit as many of those quick wins as we can and get them in as quickly as we can do. But at the same time, that, yes, they all take work and some of them play off of each other, so sometimes we need to know how one will work before we can build another. So we're going to try our hardest to do all of those as quickly as possible, but we'll just keep working away.
Thank you. We'll go to Counselor Mader, and then we'll go to the vote.
Thank you. And thank you for the, thank you for the report and for, you know, for the Perry Group, for their work. And I'd just like to, so in the report, Angela, where it says, I would say this is probably the most important, these recommendations can, the recommendations that have come out of this work from the Perry Group should help our, it's process, people, communications, and technology. And I think that's, you know, we can sum up the work and the direction that we are going to take. So I really appreciate that being highlighted in the report. And of all of those, especially in the county, you know, the communication, I think, is going to be, you know, right out of the gate, one of the most important aspects. Land use planning is complicated, governed by environmental regulation, provincial municipal policies, can be at odds with the property owner's intended uses, and those embedded 18 recommendations that focus on equipping residents and applicants with better information about process, costs, timelines, and projects. I'm hoping that that can be a quick win so that that will, you know, actually, you know, speed things up. But congratulations on the report, and I wish you all the best in the implementation process. Did you have any comments about that? You can.
No. Through the Chair to Counselor Brainey. No, just thank you for the words. Thank you.
Okay, I neglected to go to Counselor McNaughton, so I'll go to Counselor McNaughton, then we'll call the vote.
No offense taken at all. I just wanted to know, so the change management program that's recommended, I kind of had a, I wonder if that's already underway? If there is some sort of, like, some sort of, shall we say, strategy that's already been imagined? Or is this, for some of the changes that I think our staff have already envisioned, or is this something that is yet to be developed? And if not, can you just talk about it a little bit?
Sure. Through the Chair to Counselor McNaughton. I think the change that we see is just, like, for Crystal and myself, we've been doing this for ten-plus years, we'll give ourselves a little couple of years off, but, so we have, we've worked in multiple municipalities and we've seen how the processes are supposed to go. And here, it has been a little broken at times, so it's not so much like, oh, we have this great strategy, we're just going to be implementing the way a process should go through and the steps that should be, and more communication, more collaboration with other departments. And because essentially, when we do build new communities, it will have an effect with operations, parks and rec, community services. So it's getting all those other departments as well involved and, you know, bringing a plan forward that works for the community.
Thank you for that comment.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. The motion's on the floor. I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you.
As a matter of courtesy, Chair Englestorfer, could we move up the Wellington of expression of interest? I feel bad that these folks have to sit through this. I think we can have our next item, can certainly wait. I prefer to let these folks, give them relief from having to listen to all of this.
You have a second, second, and Counselor McNaughton, so I'll call the vote on that, we move that item up ahead. All those in favor? Okay, that carries, so we'll go, we'll do that then. We'll go to, it's actually item 7.3, Report of the Recreation and Community Facilities Department dated November 27, 2025, Regarding the Wellington Town Hall Expression of Interest Outcome and Recommended Next Steps. Can I get somebody to put this on the floor, and then we'll go to questions. Counselor McNaughton, seconded by Mayor Ferguson.
Thank you, McNaughton, Ferguson, motion that report RCF 062025, Regarding the Wellington Town Hall Expression of Interest Outcome and Recommended Next Steps Be Received, That Council Accept the Wellington Town Hall Foundation's Expression of Interest Proposal for the Future Use and Stewardship of the Wellington Town Hall Property, and That Council Direct Staff to Work with the Wellington Town Hall Foundation to Develop a Memorandum of Understanding, Outlining the Terms, Conditions, and a 12- to 24-month timeline for the phased transition of ownership and stewardship of the Wellington Town Hall, and to Bring the Memorandum of Understanding Back to Council for Approval.
Thank you, Counselor McNaughton. I'll hand it over to Director Lindsay for some words.
Thank you. Through the Chair, the words can be quite summarized after that very detailed deputation that happened at the beginning of the committee, the whole meeting. I would just like to share that this was a collaborative process with community, programs, services, and initiatives. So I am going to ask Director Cowan to come to the podium as well. We utilize both of our special skill sets to be able to support this particular activity. The deputation that you saw and the recommendations that council are bringing forward for your consider, consideration are in alignment with the mandate that we were given to support the EOI Working Group, which was to engage with the community, to help to define the EOI, to consider both opportunities and constraints associated with the building, and to seek the best potential future use of the property through an EOI process. So I certainly would like to, we'll get right to opening the floor and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor Nyman and then Counselor Brainey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that EOI that went out, what's the best possible, so was outright sale of the building part of that? Was that ever discussed?
Through the Chair to Counselor Nyman. The way, the terms of reference, when it was initially drafted, the terms of reference were amended to say potential sale. It did not say particular sale in the EOI.
Okay, so I, and for me, I guess I just want to lay this out there. The potential sale, I guess, and you don't really want to usually do this, but it's choice of wording, and maybe that's why we didn't get as many people showing interest. It was because it was a potential sale, it wasn't an actual, we could sell the building, right? So like, we're going to sell the building, I guess that's kind of what I'm saying.
Counselor Brainey.
Thank you, Chair Englestorfer. I'm not, I already, and I apologize, I probably use far more commentary than I did with questions, and I'm certainly not going to reiterate that. I think everyone knows how I feel, I've been consistent on this. I would like to say, though, that, sort of make it clear, it's, sometimes leadership sucks, and I'm personal friends with Christine and a few people. I have no qualms, as a matter of fact, I commend them for trying to bring their view across and what they're trying to do with what they brought forward. I commend them. I don't know how much time and effort's gone into it, but I've been consistent from day one. I feel that my responsibility as a leader or a counselor in my community with the people that elected me was to try to get the best value that we possibly could for this building. And I don't have, I don't have any, because I'm confident with the heritage factor, I feel that, I can't support this because I feel that there's potential value for our residents and the county to put the building up for sale, to see what potentially we value. I believe that it's, it could be a huge asset for somebody that wants private ownership, whether it, I didn't want to suggest whether it be a private home, a hotel, a bistro, a daycare. That's not for me to decide, but I think it's our responsibility around the table to get the best value and the most value that we can possibly get from that building. And that's why I can't support this. It's not that I don't believe in what's been proposed and brought forward, but I feel my responsibility is to follow through with what we can potentially get for this building and what value. And I think we have to start thinking that way. I'm not upset with any of you folks at all. I'm more upset with our own internal processes, and it's, it's been, yeah, I'll say no more.
Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I won't repeat, but I said before, I do fully support this. Just one possible suggestion to speed things up, and I think Counselor Nyman might even agree with this one, in paragraph three, instead of saying 12- to 24-month timeframe, would it be acceptable to staff and to the potential foundation to go with just 12 months? Let's get it done within a year. And if it doesn't get done within a year, then other options could be looked at. So I would make an amending motion that we make that just a 12-month timeframe. If I had a second. Counselor Mader would second that.
Okay, do we want to deal with that motion now, and then, or do we want to?
Or later.
Okay, so let's, let's put that on the back burner, and we'll do the first round of questions, and we'll come back for that amending motion. Okay. Counselor Harrison?
Yes, I'm, my question is, have we ever done an appraisal, so to speak, on this? Because my line of thinking is similar to Counselor Brainey's, but I think that number I need to have influenced my decision.
Through the Chair. Chair to Counselor Harrison. Yes, we did have an appraisal done several years ago during the time of the, we have that number. I don't believe it was discussed in the public realm, but we do have a number that's approximately...
Could you tell me what that number is?
It was an appraisal undertaken by an appraisal company who will look at the building and provide a very robust report that talks about the property itself. It compares it with other, like, buildings that have, like, not necessarily the levers. But I'm just getting a little bit of advice as to whether I can see that.
If it ever goes to sale, we want that information out there.
No, but we need to signal what that value means.
In close, we'll... So we can actually go into closed session if we want to, at any time, according to our procedural...
After a brief discussion, it was done several years ago, we would need to do, it was never put to market or discussed with anyone else, so the, and I'm also going from memory, but I have looked at it recently, it was approximately $450,000.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor, Counselor Grosso?
Yeah, I do agree with the report because, with all due respect, Christine and Sarah, nobody in their right mind's going to buy this building because it needs a lot of work. And kudos to all you guys. If you guys can do it, let's do it. Because no one's going to buy that building with the foundation issues and the second floor structural. It's not going to happen. Maybe I would have years ago, but I'm not that crazy now, so I do agree.
Mayor Ferguson.
Thank you very much. I guess a question to Lisa and Emily. The process of working out the MOU is going to be, you know, lengthy, and there's going to be back and forth and everything else. There are going to, presumably, it's going to come back to council with provisions and what's being proposed and agreed to, at which time council will be able to approve, recommend, or do whatever before we sign anything. Correct?
Through the Chair to Mayor Ferguson. Yeah, absolutely, I believe the MOU would come back for council's approval.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe it says that, yeah, just to, but just to confirm, yes, the provisions would come forward for your final...
Right, okay. I do agree with expediting the process, and I think that's good. I do agree with expediting the process, and I think that's good for the municipality. So we can weigh, weigh other options if other options are necessary. But I, I stand by what I said before. I think this is an interesting proposal, and I'd like to see where it goes. The building, I think, as I recall, it is a bundle of money that has to be put into it to bring it up to, as Counselor Grosso indicated. So let's see where it goes. Thank you for the report. The report's great.
Okay. I have quite a list here, so we'll go to Counselor Pennell and then Counselor Maynard.
I guess my thoughts on it are exactly the same as Counselor Brainy. And I'll tell you why. We have went for years, this county, people are complaining about taxes and that. If we as a council are not prepared to make serious decisions for this county for the benefit of all taxpayers, we got a problem. And further to that, if this was a case that somebody's walking in and say, hey, you know, by the thirtieth of January, we're willing to take it over, everything's done, we want no re, money coming from the county. And that, I think we all know, if you look at the amount of different places we got for some form of recreation or other in the county, every year we're increased on amounts people want. I think it's about time Prince Edward County learned to say no. That's my thoughts, and I'll ask for a recorded vote when it does come out.
Okay. Counselor Maynard?
Thank you. I'm going to take a slightly different tact, and I understand Counselor Brainy's concerns, but sometimes best value for a building, especially a municipal asset, I mean, best value could be in cash or in dollars, but best value could also be in community benefit. And I just think, you know, with the one year, you know, one, one-year lead, right? That's not long, but that, and maybe we do need to do a market value appraisal, right? Knowing that that building, I think, is designated, right? You know, it can't really be torn down. I also caution council that, that going down this road may have other consequences in the long term. Because we have heard from residents that why do we have so many town halls? So if we can't protect this asset, how do we protect the town halls that we have across the municipality? So it's fine to say, we'll get rid of this one, but when they come to Amelia's Burger, when they come to Hillier, when they come to, how do we then justify that, that those are not, you know, up for sale, that they have a cash value, that they, you know, we have, we have too many? Because, I mean, really, we do have a plethora of town halls after amalgamation. Other amalgamated places have not, have, have, have divested themselves. I mean, there is precedent for how amalgamated municipalities have divested themselves of all of those meeting spaces. So I just, I just caution, I think we can at least give this a year to see how it works out, and then, and probably have an accurate market value appraisal, considering that there's really very little that you can do with that, with that property. So, so I will be supporting the motion as presented and as with Councilor Hirsch's amendments.
Okay. So we'll go to Counselor McNaughton, then Counselor St. Jean.
Thank you. I was going to say similar, that I think this brings tremendous value, and when, when one of the presenters mentioned, the TED Center mentioned, the Brickworks, those organizations have brought huge value and also dollars to areas. So they've been, they've been good incubators for, for opportunity as well. So I, I think this is a strong value to bring to the community at the price tag of, I can't remember, of, you know, not even ten, what, twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars of electricity and staff time? So, and then it's off our books. The only thing I really want to speak to is to be very cautious with the MOU to ensure that if this building ever does move forward for sale down the road, if, that, that the municipality's interests are preserved, if that should ever come to happen. I doubt it will. I think this is, I have great faith, and I think the savings of not having to carry this building in the future is, is such a great benefit, but still be able to have that, the power of a community space that can generate the type of energy that Baxter does, or more. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor St. Jean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This isn't easy. It's complicated, and like Counselor Brainy said, we, there are tough decisions that need to be made. You know, we recently went through an asset management plan that identified how bad things really are. We set a goal for ourselves of twenty-five percent disperse disposition of buildings. I don't know how we're going to achieve that if you don't start removing some from the stock. I think it's rather short sighted that we just talk about, oh, savings down the road. How are we going to fund the rest of those buildings? You fund them through the sale of the surplus buildings. You know, approximately a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar asset that can help to fund the ones that can be saved. And I stress the word can be saved without massive investment and such. With regards to the plans, I, absolutely, I, you know, I wish, you know, if it moves forward, I wish you the best of luck. But I also know from close to four years of personal experience with the Picton Town Hall Board of Management, this is not easy. Do not ever fool yourself into thinking that programming and establishing a foundation, which won't take twelve months, it's minimum twenty-four months to go from the state where you are a not-for-profit to then applications to becoming a charitable foundation. That takes massive amounts of time, paperwork, legal costs, all of that. I think twelve months is, it would never happen, would never happen. So in the meantime, we're going to have to, as a municipality, continue to carry this property. Not a ton of money, but it's the fact that it's still sitting there, and then you've got a deteriorating property that's going to be worth less down the road. You know, and I, and I'm going to remind everyone, you know, about five years ago, there was a town hall meeting in Wellington specifically called to ask the question of the community, what, what do we want to do with this? And, you know, it was standing room only. I stood at the door, I think, I'm not sure if it was Counselor Nyman that stood at the door with me, it may have been Counselor Margerson at the time. And the question that was posed to a standing room only room, should this building be sold? Overwhelming majority of people put up their hand and said, yes, it's time to let it go. Yet here we are, five years later, still hanging on to it, when we all know what it really need, what really needs, truly needs to be done. Yes, it's a tough decision. And, and I'm not, you know, it's not easy. I, I know what, what this potential foundation group is going through, but we also have to think about what's best for the whole municipality. I am not prepared to forego some four hundred and fifty to a half a million dollars' worth of funding that could be used to help those buildings and properties that can be saved. I will not be supporting this. In fact, if whatever motions are on the floor doesn't, don't pass, I think we, in my mind, we should be following the alternate recommendation to put the property, designate the property as a surplus to the needs of the municipality, get it appraised, and get it on the real estate market. I'm sorry, you know, I was a massive supporter of the Picton Town Hall project. It had its own, we had COVID in the middle of that, but had that not even occurred, the struggles, I think, would have been, you know, would still been there. I recognize that. Now, I've learned from that experience. I think it's time to move on from this building. I really do.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go second round, so Counselor Nyman and then Counselor Brainy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if it was, I'm just hypothetical, if you were to put it on the market, you sell it, and you get the money for it, where does that money go and what can it be used for? And I think Counselor St. Jean just said it, but I just want to make sure that we have an understanding of, if it's a half a million dollars, then we have an understanding where we can use that money.
Through the chair. And at that time, we would put the bylaw forward, disposition...
Go ahead. Oh, CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through, just to add to that, so when we had the asset management conversations, I remember my own comments on our deficit with respect to buildings is staggering. It really is. I think the number was five million dollars a year is what they say we should be spending on our buildings. So we need to figure out, you know, which ones we're going to keep through a process, but even the ones we do keep are still going to need significant investment over time, and we've not been storing away money in the reserve to do that. So just as Counselor St. Jean said, proceeds from any sale, this or otherwise, would go into the reserve and then would be used to fund the asset management plan for building, which would over time reduce the amount needed from the ratepayers on an annual basis.
Okay. I'm good with that. As long as we knew where that money was going to go and what we could use it for, and it sounds like it's for other buildings, could be town halls or whatever. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Brainy?
All I was going to do was to introduce a motion to put the building for sale. I know Counselor St. Jean's already mentioned that. So no, I would allow you to, to bring that forward and at the appropriate time and...
Okay. So first, I think we'll go to Counselor Hirsch, who had a motion to change the timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, my motion was simply to change the timeline in paragraph three to twelve months rather than twelve to twenty-four.
And you think you have Counselor Maynard as a secondor?
Yes.
Anybody speak to that one? Counselor Grosso?
Sorry, can I make an amendment to that motion?
It's just Counselor Hirsch's right now, which is the timeline. Okay. So any questions on this motion? So I'll call the vote, all those in favor? Two, three, four, five, that's six, seven. Carries, because, yeah, we're short one, so that, or short two, so no, so it carries. Okay. So back to the motion on the agenda. Any more discussion before we go to this vote? Counselor Grosso?
If I can make an amendment to it, that the first option to purchase would be...
We're talking this motion on the agenda.
Oh, sorry. Never mind.
We have to see, this is on the floor, so we have to see if it fails or passes.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm, I'm just going to speak to it quickly, just, I'm the last standing member on the EOI committee. I think it was two, over two years ago when this whole process started. At that time, I thought the best thing was to sell the building. You know, it's been a long process these couple of years. We went through the process to listen to the community, because I didn't want to determine an outcome without listening to the community. We've had multiple open houses, there's been a lot of people show up to them. They've all wanted to see some sort of foundation formed. I'm not so sure on the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar number. I, I have no idea how much the building's worth, but I, I see this as the quickest way to get it off of our books and into somebody else's hand. I see it as a final chance for that building, and I know that this group's going to, not going to take that lightly. So I would say, given Counselor Hirsch's motion, they have twelve months, and if, if it doesn't get done by then, then we're pounding a for-sale sign in the front lawn. So that's my view. So given that, I'm going to call the vote on the motion that's on the agenda, and it's a recorded vote requested by Counselor Pennell.
Okay.
As amended, yes.
As amended.
Okay. Counselor Maynard?
In favor.
Counselor Grosso?
In favor.
Nyman? Counselor Prinzen?
Opposed.
Counselor St. Jean?
Opposed.
Counselor Harrison?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Counselor McNaught?
In favor.
In favor.
Counselor Brainy?
Opposed.
And Counselor Engelstoffer?
In favor.
I believe that's a tie, so motion loses on a tie. Okay. So I'm going to go to Counselor St. Jean for his motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I have a secondor, Counselor Brainy, that, and I'm going to look to the clerk for the correct wording, but essentially that other option to divest of the property on the mark, on the open market, and however you need to word that.
Do you want to, should we take a short recess just to get the wording correct?
I think that's...
Okay, let's do that. Let's take a ten-minute break, and then we'll come back with that motion. Okay, let's do that. Let's take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back with that motion. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order, please. My understanding is that Counselor St. Jean has a motion to bring forward now.
And I believe the clerk, I'll just ask the clerk to read it as it's been crafted.
Yep.
That council resolved that a parcel of municipal land located at 246 Main Street, Wellington, Ontario, the Wellington Town Hall, be declared surplus to the needs of the municipality for the purpose of sale in accordance with CSPI-08, Sale and Disposition of Land Policy.
And my seconder is Counselor Brainy.
Okay, any discussion on this one?
Last recorded vote.
Yeah, okay. Any discussion? No, pretty straightforward, so recorder vote. Yeah.
Sorry about the table talk, Mr. Chair, but I believe the CAO, didn't you just have a conversation with him?
Yes.
Yes, I did. So is that what we discussed? Is that gonna be part of that motion, or should I make that amendment?
Mr. Chair, through you, no, that this, what you're suggesting could be the outcome of this process. So I don't believe that it needs to be a separate motion.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Pennell.
Opposed. Excuse me, in favor.
It's getting late in the day, Counselor Pennell.
You're putting, keeping the clerk on his toes here. Counselor Maynard.
Opposed.
Counselor Grosso.
In favor.
Counselor Nyman.
In favor.
Counselor Prinzen.
In favor.
Counselor St. Jean.
In favor.
Counselor Harrison.
In favor.
Counselor Hirsch.
Opposed.
Counselor McNutt.
Opposed.
Counselor Brainy.
In favor.
Mayor Ferguson. Counselor Anglesdorfer.
Opposed.
I think that carries.
That does carry.
Okay, so we're moving on now to, it was item 7.2, which is the report of the Corporate and Legislative Services Department dated November 27, 2025, regarding the Administrative Monetary Penalties Bylaw update. Can I get a mover and seconder to put this on the floor, please? Mover and seconder. Counselor Prinzen, seconder please. Counselor Pennell.
I think we're gonna sit here all day without him. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Prinzen. Did you say Pennell? It is now that report CLS-38-2025 regarding the Administrative Monetary Penalties Bylaw update be received. Two, that a bylaw to amend by law 4519-2019 being a bylaw to establish a system of administrative penalties for noncompliance with bylaws of the County of Prince Edward as listed on this agenda be approved at the next feasible council meeting. Three, that a bylaw to provide for the appointment of screening and hearing officers for the purpose of administration of an administrative monetary penalty system within the County of Prince Edward as listed on this agenda be approved at the next feasible council meeting. And four, that the appointment of a screening and hearing officers policy as listed on this agenda be approved at the next feasible council meeting.
Thank you. I see Sarah's here. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to give a bit of a background to why this report is coming before you. And even, I thought it would be helpful, just a very brief refresh of what even the AMP bylaw is in the AMP system. So with a bit of your indulgence, I thank you for listening to me. So the administrative monetary penalties are authorized under the Municipal Act as an additional tool for the administration and adjudication of bylaw infractions. It is intended to be a more efficient, faster, more flexible, and a customer-focused process in comparison to the Provincial offenses court system. Council implemented the AMP system in the county in 2019 through bylaw 4519-2019. At that time, only the parking and the short-term accommodation bylaws were included as designated bylaws for the use of what I'm gonna call AMPs, the Administrative Monetary Penalties. Since that time, council has directed that additional bylaws be designated for enforcement through AMPs, namely the Backyard Hens bylaw, the Grass and Naturalization bylaw, and more recently, you may recall just last week, the, actually, this week, the Vehicle for Hire bylaw, and then about a month or so ago, the Right-of-Way bylaw. So the, part of the recommendations before you today are intended to give effect to this direction by adding these bylaws and their corresponding penalty schedules to the Administrative Monetary Penalty bylaw. So that's the, again, the Grass and Naturalization bylaw, the Right-of-Way bylaw, and the Vehicle for Hire bylaw. Those, the AMP bylaw needs to be amended to include those with their penalty schedules that you've already approved. So that typically would have come before you just as an item for a bylaw for consideration, because council's already approved that that happened, and you've seen those schedules before. But shortly after I took on the role of Director of Corporate and Legislative Services, an issue arose, and so that precipitated me bringing forward the other recommendations in this report. So, and again, just to refresh a little bit about the Administrative Monetary Penalty system. Under that system, bylaw officers may issue a penalty notice to a person upon determining that there has been a contravention of a designated bylaw. The person then has the right to request a review of that penalty notice by a screening officer. If not satisfied with the decision of the screening officer, the person can appeal that decision to a hearing officer. And the decision of the hearing officer is final. So if a person does request a review, they're sent a notice of the time and date of that review hearing. Currently, the bylaw provides that such notice would be sent via regular mail. And there is no discretion, either of a screening officer or of the director who administers the bylaw, to address a situation where, through no fault of their own, a person does not receive a notice of a hearing or attend at the time and place set for a hearing. So those are the main recommendations in that report, are to address those procedural gaps and which ultimately support the intended objective of an AMP system to provide a fair and expeditious manner of adjudicating bylaw infractions. So that's sort of the high-level summary. I'm happy to take questions or to go into further detail, if you wish, on what those specific items are that would address those procedural gaps.
Okay, thank you. I have a list here, so we'll start with Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to touch on the last bit that you were talking about, so if there's a issue, instead of sending a letter out or a notice out, we're gonna be emailing them or the person? Because I'm thinking of SDA, so, I mean, you referenced what happened just a couple of months ago, which I think started this whole process. So I guess, and also, I was contacted, and so, you know, whether that letter got there or not, I guess, if it's emailed, because if somebody has an SDA, we have their email address anyways. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's correct.
So then with that email, even if they remove their SDA, we still have the email of that person. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, do you mean if they are no longer licensed, would we still have their email address?
Yeah, no longer licensed, or they decided not to, decided not to have their SDA anymore. They've taken it, they've quit renting it, and they've asked to have it taken off the websites, whatever websites they are. We would still have their contact information, would we not? Could.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we would have their contact information from whatever time they provided it to us. So just depending on the length of time, there could still be an issue with that email address no longer being valid, I suppose.
Right, but we would know that right away, I guess, if it bounced, it would bounce back, I guess, if it wasn't no longer valid. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, we're making the changes, and I guess for that situation that happened just a month or month and a half ago, is that person able to, based on this, if it passes, based on this new criteria or new steps or whatever, would they be able to, because I think they missed their, their date for the screening officer or whatever. Is that not what, and so they want, would they be able to start that process, because the timeline is so tight here?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So any amendments to the bylaw, if passed and approved by council, would not have any retroactive application? However, in speaking with the screening officer, as well as the Director of Finance, who as well as the Director of Finance, who they directly report to, I believe we've found a solution for that particular, those particular individuals, but it's, it wouldn't be a solution that would apply in any circumstance, and so the procedural amendments that are being proposed are, would still, I would still be recommending them, even though in that particular situation, I believe we've been able to find a solution for them. I don't, I don't believe that's been communicated to them yet, but we have worked through a solution.
Okay, quick follow-up.
Yeah, because I was just contacted here in the last day or so, so if the solution is there, we maybe should let them know that something's come up, I guess.
Okay, Counselor Prinzen.
Thank you, as you can probably guess, I was being co-counselor with Counselor Nyman, but he got his hand up quicker, and I was, I was going along the same lines, because according to, maybe a few last words, but on page 207 of our agenda, we're kind of admitting that mail wasn't the best way by doing that, but hearing you say you've already reached out, I, or have not reached out, but come up with a solution, in your words, I guess, I guess my only comment would be, I'm disappointed that hasn't been transferred to them, if that's the case, and I would really ask that improvements along those lines happen, because we shouldn't even be talking about this, so thanks.
Counselor Mater, and then Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, just for clarification, so this administrative bylaw then will apply to the attachments, Schedule FE, and the unnumbered, the bylaw for the right, for the right-of-ways? That's why they're attached, these are the ones that it will now capture.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, the bylaws that are, the schedules that are included in the report, as well as the backyard hen, parking, and short-term accommodation bylaws that are already part of the Administrative Monetary Penalties.
Right, yeah, so they're already captured.
Yes.
So I guess the one that's marked Schedule X, which is the municipal right-of-way, I know there was lots of conversation on that one, and there's a few pieces in there that I thought we had maybe already dealt with, but, you know, operate a vehicle on a municipal right-of-way without removing mud, clay, lime, fertilizer, manure, or similar materials, because a lot of these municipal right-of-ways are used for farm purposes, and when you leave the field, right, you're going on to a, on to a, to a potential right-of-way that is in itself just a laneway, so how do we, you know, what? How do, how do we handle that? Or if they, you know, if, you know, if they, if they cut a tree, that's, you know, so they can get their tractor through those sort, because we've had that conversation, just looking for some clarification.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for the question, because what you're seeing in that schedule is short-form wording, so it's an attempt to take the, the longer version that's in the bylaw and shorten it to something that could be written on, a penalty notice is essentially, I'm sure none of you have received a speeding ticket, but maybe have seen one, so it's essentially the same size, so there's not a lot of room to write what the, what the violation is, and so that's the purpose of the short-form wording. But certainly, this is the same one that you approved when the bylaw came forward, and the bylaw itself has the exemption for, this does not interfere with normal farm practices, some language like that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Pennell.
If a senior or somebody is out at work, and their neighborhood says, geez, we'd like to hire somebody to pick up brush out of the lawns and that, are they breaking the law? Because really, the way that states is, if you're moving stuff for pay, that you have to have a license.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So as it relates to the right-of-way bylaw, the, there are certain, there are certain provisions in there that would require a person to receive a permit from the county before they could engage in certain activities, but the director has the ultimate authority on all the items to allow something without needing a permit, so, and I'm sorry, you've caught me a bit off-guard, because I'm not, the, the report that's before you today is really just implementing that piece, where we've already had the discussion on the substantive nature of the bylaw itself, but I believe I can answer your question that way, that the director of operations maintains discretion to allow certain activities, even if that even is in the list of activities that would require a license, and I just don't have that bylaw, the whole thing in front of me, but I can get you that answer.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Brainy.
So question I have, so the Appeals Committee that Counselor Anglesdorfer and I currently sit on, which has been very effective, doesn't cost us a dime. What happens to that committee, and how much is it going to cost to appoint adjudicators to oversee this process? Because I haven't seen any cost, I read this report last week, and perhaps I've been mistaken, but I haven't seen any costs attributed to hiring adjudicators to oversee a process like this.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Brainy, thank you for the question. We already have a hearing officer who is on contract with the municipality, not an employee. The screening officers are already employees with the county who do other functions. In fact, they are the court clerks who administer the Provincial Offenses Court system. The, the reason why there's reference to those positions in this report is that our AMP bylaw, the way it's currently written, actually references that our screening and hearing officers will be appointed pursuant to the screening and hearing officer policy and bylaw, both of which we did not have. So that's also filling that procedural gap, and the benefit of doing that is it will provide some, some criteria that we can turn to when determining who should be appointed to position of a screening officer, and also, conditions by which, if the recommendations are approved, the CAO would have the ability to suspend or revoke those appointments, if there's something out of turn. So I take your point, I should probably have had some detail in terms of what the cost is to the hearing officer, but by legislation, if we have an AMP system, we have to have an independent hearing officer. The hearing officer cannot be an employee of the city, of the county, cannot be related to, so those provisions from the legislation would form part of the bylaw I'm proposing, as well as the policy. And in terms of the Appeals Committee, that's a very interesting question as well, because we currently have a bit of a hybrid system. The, in my mind, the Appeals Committee, its, its real value is in listening to appeals of decisions made by staff in terms of, do you get a license or not for this certain activity that we regulate? Or if your license has been revoked, who's gonna look at that? If a staff, at staff level, it's been revoked, or if conditions have been put on that, that you don't agree with. So that's the, where the appeals would go. It is also a statutorily mandated body through the prevent, through the Building Code Act and our property standards. So that's sort of where it began. But we also are currently using the Appeals Committee to hear, to hear certain AMPs related to the short-term accommodation, and to me, those should be in front of the hearing officers, not in front of the, in front of the Appeals Committee. So there's, there's a few pieces there that I'll be bringing forward in the next, probably in Q1, along with some other things that I'll be bringing forward to address that. I hope I've answered your question.
Quick follow-up, Counselor Brainy.
First of all, it's been three years for Counselor Anglesdorfer and I in the Appeals Committee, as I said, which has been very effective, and it doesn't cost us a dime. We've not had one application before, so an appeal on an SDA scenario. Furthermore, I cannot support anything unless I know the costs attributed to it. I, I believe we're going in a direction that we're building an empire in Shire Hall, and I think it needs to stop. We need to look at what we're doing, do we need these extra scenarios? And I will not support anything unless I know the costs attributed to it.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Mater.
Just as a follow-up to Counselor Brainy's concern, and maybe we don't have that information, and we'll have to have it come back, what the costs are, but if we are gonna do that, which I'm assuming, that, like, how are other municipalities, like, you know, how are other municipalities dealing with, with these like situations?
Thank you for the question through, Mr. Chair. Many, many municipalities are turning to, to use AMPs more and more. I do have a note in my report that speaks of these in Oshawa, Markham, Richmond Hill, Clarence Rockland, Kitchener Waterloo, Vaughan, Brampton, Oakville, Niagara Falls, Burlington, Peterborough, Prince Edward Count, well, us, Pelham, Town of Lincoln, Kingston, Alton Hills, Windsor, and many municipalities are starting to use the AMPs as their only tool. They're not even having the ability for their officers to issue either a Part 1 ticket, so that's like your speeding ticket, or a Part 3 summons to go use the Provincial Offenses Court system at all. And the province is, it continues to expand the ability of different pieces of legislation. The Building Code Act is about to have the regulations added to it to allow AMPs to be implemented for violations of the Building Code. I would also note that the reason why the Appeals Committee has not seen any appeals of an SDA license is because we have that currently set up, that they go to the hearing officer, and I would like to stop that. Partly to your point, the Appeals Committee is not a body that we compensate for their time, although it is very much appreciated, because there are members of the public on that as well, but that, to me, is a better forum for decisions to be made about license conditions, whether license should be issued, as opposed to the hearing officer, because that is really set up to adjudicate administrative monetary penalties, not to consider conditions that the staff have imposed on certain licenses.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? Counselor Pennell?
I guess I'm inclined to agree with Counselor Brainy, and that is, I don't see any rush on appointing somebody today, and I would like to have, so, what is it gonna cost, and what is the cheapest, most efficient way to do it? And, once again, we've gotta start pounding, cut back, not go forward spending more money, if it's possible, or doing it in the most reasonable way for the county.
Yes, Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I could just comment, the, the recommendations are not asking to appoint anyone new. We already have a hearing officer who is the external party who is under contract. That contract came as a result after a, not sure if it was an RFP process or an EOI process, but there was a public process for people to bid on that job. And if we did not have the hearing officer, we could no longer issue parking tickets, full stop. Zero parking tickets, if we remove the hearing officer, because the only way that we are currently enforcing our parking violations is through administrative monetary penalties. We do not have the option to issue tickets that go to court. So that is the function that the hearing officer plays, is, is, first they go to a screening, which is an employee who already does another function with the county, so we're not paying an additional staff person to do this work. And then, but if they're not satisfied with the screening officer, there has to, by legislation, be an independent third party, has to be independent, and that is the hearing officer. So, and we already, who we already have on contract, and the contract expires, it might even be, I want to say it's in, within six months, that contract is going to expire.
Counselor Hirsch, and then Counselor Brainy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would agree that we need to, you know, we need to know what the cost would be, if any, but I think there's a term called cost-benefit that we need to know, and what is the likely increase in revenue or, or other costs, like legal costs, foregone, because we have this process? So if this does go back for an additional report, I would suggest that the, the numbers might happen to go both ways.
Okay, Counselor Brainy?
Thank you, Chair Anglesdorfer, I put the motion forward right now, that we defer this until we have the information appropriately, so we can make a proper decision on this based on costs.
Do you have a seconder? Counselor Harrison? Okay, any questions on the motion? Yeah, Counselor Mater?
Yeah, just, just for clarification, so this hearing officer, is he under contract, like, on a, does he get paid per item that he, he or she adjudicates? Or is it a, is it a flat fee?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, I've just pulled up the, the contract, it is with, with a firm called Rutherford Prosecutions. It's the, the main, the principal of that business is, is a lawyer. They are paid either a half-day or a full-day, depending on how many hearings we have provided to the hearing officer to hear. So we wait until we have at least a half-day's worth of work to schedule hearings. So we're not scheduling, as soon as we get one, schedule it, then that person comes in and does that one, so we wait until we fill up either half-a-day or a full-day, so we get the most bang for our buck in terms of that required statutory position. And I can pull up for you as well the rate, and the rates are different depending on whether the hearing officer is presiding over parking tickets, parking AMPs, or other types of, of AMPs. So for parking, full day is $650, a half-a-day is $375, and for all other appeals, a full day $800, and a half-day $450. If, if we are combining some parking with some non-parking, then it would be $750 for a full day. So those are the rates that we're, we're paying to the hearing officer.
Okay, any other questions on the motion that's on the floor? No, I'm gonna call the vote on Counselor Brainy's motion, then, all in favor? That carries then, so, okay. So that does it, I think, so we'll, Counselor Prinzen for adjournment, and seconded by Counselor St. Jean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's a Prinzen-St. Jean motion that's meeting now, adjourn at 4:08 PM.
All in favor? That carries, thank you.